Okay, seven o'clock. I think I'm gonna get started. That sound good, Kyle? You're muted, Kyle.
We're all set here.
Okay. This is the July 20th GBOS regular meeting. Due to COVID spread of COVID-19, we'll be doing this meeting by Zoom. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors and its committees and subcommittees are subject to Alaska Open Meetings Act and as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. I call this meeting order at 7:01. My name is Jerry Fox and I am the co-chair and public safety supervisor. Oh, now I am the new roads and utilities supervisor, I should say.
I'm Mike Edgerton, co-chairland use supervisor.
Brianna Sullivan. Parks and Rec.
James Glover, public safety.
Erin Boone, fire department.
Okay. Disclosures. First thing we have up is disclosures and the first thing I'm gonna do is disclose that on the agenda is the new development over there on Gunny Sack. And I live in the community. And so I may have a conflict of interest. So I will look to the board or especially my co-chair to start to see if he thought it was significant.
And so I'll take, I'll take chair for the next few seconds. I think that you have, you do have an interest, but you have an interest shared by everybody in the mine roads area, which is a significant proportion of the community. So I don't think it's a disclosure that, sorry, I don't think it's an interest which warrants recusal.
And just for the rest of the board, so the rest of the board knows the the conflict has to be significant. And so anybody else have any disclosures?
I was going to say that the other thing is although I, although I do not think it's significant if anyone else on the board disagrees and wants to put it to a vote, they're welcome to. Okay, not hearing anything. I'll hand it back to Jerry.
There you go. And so is there any other disclosures?
Yes, James Glover with public safety have a disclosure that we have a as a side project, Alaska Aquaponics is making a community presentation to let everyone know what we're planning. And I just wanted to let you guys know in the disclosure portion that I'll be stepping aside as a supervisor and putting on the public hat, I guess you'd say, a member of the community.
Right. And so the way it works is, you know, then I rule whether I think it's significant. And if it's significant, then you would not be able to vote. But I do not believe it's significant because we're actually not gonna vote on anything. I think
That's correct.
You are just presenting. And so I don't think there's any conflict there. And again, the board can vote if they disagree.
I'd say there is a special revision. If it's a proposal you're presenting, then obviously you, you don't get involved in the vote, but you can of course stay in the room.
Copy.
I have two disclosures. On item 14, I've been working with Girdwood Bear Aware breaking, breaking bear proof, bear resistant cans and electrocuting bears. So I do have a private interest in item 14. And also for item 15, I'm one of the many members of the subcommittee that's looking at CARES Act funding and how we can use it to work on childcare and healthcare.
And I would say I don't believe that you have a significant financial or private interests in either of those things. Interest is not the right word, but private. You know, you get advantage for either one of those. And if the board thinks differently, they could speak out. Okay, any other disclosures? Hearing none. Agenda revisions and approval, the July 2020 GBOS regular meeting agenda. As chair, I have never used this before, but I'm gonna tonight and say that I would like to change the agenda. And as a chair, I have the ability to just take something off the agenda and I would like to take off item 12, which is the request for GBOS action regarding Jennifer Johnson. I don't think this issue is within the powers of the GBOS. You know, it isn't fire, it isn't land use, it isn't police, et cetera. And I know in the past we voted on issues outside of our powers. But they were not issues of a specific political nature. This one is presenting as somebody who's running for office and the person running for office is in a primary that happens well, the Tuesday after our next GBOS meeting. And I don't think it's appropriate for our board to be involved in, you know, primary or pub, excuse me, political being for against political parties. The the action asked for censorship of our representative. We as a board do not have any power to censor anybody. Censorship when in the legislature is like the most powerful thing they could do without removing somebody from office and they can do that at the state level, but we don't have any power to do that. So having said that, I'm going to, we have that removed from the agenda. But I would like anybody that would like to, to if they'd like to, they could vote against or call or vote to vote against me.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that. So this is under new business, so it's a discussion. You know, if it, if it's presented again as for a vote, then I think we can again have this, have this broader discussion about what we can and can't do and what we should and shouldn't vote on. For the moment, I think this is though it's kind of towards the edge of what we, what we typically do, it's definitely not under us tax supervision powers, but it, I think it does fit under the ex officio community council role. So I am gonna move that we reinstate item 12 on the agenda.
So do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, further discussion. I'll start the further discussion. I called Jennifer Johnson and asked her to come into one of our meeting to explain her position. She declined, but she said she would reach out to the community member that had the issue. And I believe she has done that. She apologized in the paper for what she said. She took ownership of it. She said she learned from it. I don't condone what she said. I think what she said was wrong and very, very wrong. But I don't think it's our business to be involved in political nature. Further discussion?
Well, I'll, I'll just argue against you, Jerry. The I, I, I have some concerns over what this, this, that this could, that this, there's a slippery slope argument. But if we ignore that and just look at the, the merits of this, I think it's something that community members brought, has brought forward. It's been discussed at land use. We're gonna discuss it again tonight. I assume it will come to land use again. And if there's a vote in favor of GBOS doing something, then it will gain coming front of us next month and then we can decide what we're going to do. It may not get that far. I don't know. There may be other, other methods of resolving this, but I think it's something that does fall within our, our sort of the broadest parts of the community council role. And I think it should be on here. I'm not comfortable with, with, definitely not comfortable with removing it and stopping the discussion at this point.
Since it has been brought to land use, I am interested to hear what was discussed there. I don't, I kind of agree with Jerry that it's not really, it's kind of outside of our what we're responsible for. I mean, there a lot of things that politicians say that I don't agree with, but like, where do you draw the line on which ones you should speak up about? But that being said, since it was brought to land use, I feel like we should at least hear what was said.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Kyle, call for a vote. And now just to be clear, this is a vote to make, put this back on the agenda.
Okay, roll call. Mike Edgerton.
Yes.
Jerry Fox.
No.
James Glover.
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Erin Boone.
Yes.
That's this 4-1.
Okay. Next up. Well, is there any other, I need approval for the agenda as written, I guess.
I move to approve.
The motion.
Well, just say all in favor. We'll just do it by, everybody say aye.
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 Okay. The June 15th, 2020 GBOS regular meeting minutes approval. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I've read them and moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 The June 22nd, 2020 GBOS special meeting, recove the 19 cases in Girdwood minutes approval. I entertain a motion to approve as written unless somebody has a edit.
I move to approve the minutes. Sorry. I'm gonna second whoever said them.
Okay, call for a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
GBOS work session number one, July 14th, 2020 minutes approval. And entertain a motion to approve as written unless anybody has an edit.
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged and use the chat box and Zoom. I'm gonna ask you, Kyle, to just kind of help me with that chat box and keep an eye on it when we have discussions. And if people could, you know, raise their hand, Kyle, in the, if everybody wants to know how you raise your hand, you look at your participants and you find yourself and you click on the little hand.
And it's also good to put something in the chat box because sometimes I can't see everybody's hands.
Okay. Okay. Where am I? GBOS 2020 budget meeting dates are tentatively scheduled for the budget number two is July 28th, 7 to 9 p.m. Budget meeting number three is Wednesday, August 5th, 12 to 2. And the 2020 GBOS grants presentation is September 15th, 7 to 9. MOA GBOS quarterly meetings is scheduled for July 27th, which is a week from today at 4 p.m. And this one is gonna be via Teams versus Zoom. So it's the first time we're doing one by team. So we'll have to log into Teams versus Zoom and I haven't done that, but hopefully it'll go smoothly. Kyle will have that all figured out, right, Kyle?
Yeah, the link will be on the agenda.
Okay. Windy Corner Virtual Open Meeting. Virtual Open Forum Public Meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July 30th at 5 p.m. via teleconference. Visit project website for more info, interview documents at www.windycorner.info. The public review draft of the local landmark register ordinance is available for public review and comment from June 15th through August 31st, 2020 and can be found here at, and there's a link on the agenda. Introduction, presentations, report number one. We want to welcome Brianna Sullivan. She was appointed to seat E. Brianna, we want to thank you for volunteering and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Next is now supervisor roles and GBOS co-chair assignments. So I will just announce the roles are, I am gonna be doing roads and utilities. Mike Edgerton is gonna stay at land use. Brianna Sullivan is gonna do parks and rec. Erin Boone is going to do fire department. And James Glover is going to do public safety. Mike Edgerton and myself will continue as co-chairs. Number two, I don't know, is Chris on here? Update from Chris Schudy about COVID-19 response from MOA. I don't know if we, know if we have anybody from the MOA on.
Chris was gonna try to make it, but it was a tight fit to get here tonight, so he may not be able to get on the phone.
Okay, and if he comes in, we can push him up, you know, we can talk, have him talk later, move him into a later part of the agenda. Number three, a presentation by Alaska Aquaponics, presentation on commercial wholesale greenhouse in the Girdwood Industrial Park. Parcel ID number 0751310700. James Glover presenting.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to present to the community Alaska Aquaponics. We have an endeavor to provide local food and produce to the community in the industrial park. We're gonna provide local produce to restaurants and markets, both in Anchorage and in Girdwood. We're hoping to provide education, training and equipment for individuals and businesses alike for these farm systems. The, right now, we're in the beginning process, but it'll be located at the Girdwood Industrial Site. We it'll be an industrial, commercial wholesale greenhouses. They'll be open to the public with a year-round operation. Commercial, commercial hold of culture facility. And it meets the intended use for that area. We've been working with the municipalities. Actually, our first correspondence was in 2014, so it's been a long process. But we did receive a determination letter that the use is acceptable. So we are gonna continue with the permit process. And that's where we are today. But we wanted to let the community know that we've sort of gotten the determination for the land use. So we are going to you know, progress on that permit for that site. The produce will be available for delivery. It'll be an onsite well at the facility. And I've put up some slides. Kyle, do you have those slides up there? I can't see my screen.
Yes, they're up there, James. Kyle, you're muted.
Okay. So the next slide would be the the overview site plan and sort of hand sketch at this time. We, we haven't taken it to the next level of, you know, architectural drawings at this point. But you can see our intent is to start with one greenhouse and then we hope to add more as it becomes profitable. Or we make it, you know, as we make it available. But we're starting with one and we will be putting in a well. And, you know, moving forward from there to build the site out. And I put some extra information in there for those of you who had a little bit of questions about it. But given tonight's meeting and being long, we were thinking we would keep it to a short presentation at this time. More information to come, I'm sure. And I, I apologize. I don't think the slide came up with my personal information and contact information. But I think anyone listening who would like to get ahold of me and ask questions, please feel free to do so. I can give you my phone number and email address now. It's, my phone number is 907-350-7785. And my email address is go ahead.
I don't think there's anything. I just
Okay. The email address is alaskaaquaponicsak@gmail.com. And I think that's all I have. There's no action needed from GBOS or land use. But we did want to make the community aware of the process since we did receive a determination letter from the municipality that there, that it was an allowable use in the area. So I hope that, I hope we see this thing come to, to the community and provide local produce for, for all involved. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Sorry, Jerry.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'm just gonna ask one question. What happens to fish?
At, at this time, we have been, we're actually gonna when they expire, which is, you know, different depending on what we will be using, but we will be making, sending that to dog food.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it would be Alaska, you know, provided, you know, there's a few companies that we're looking to send it to, but that's what will happen with the fish.
Thanks.
Any other questions I can answer if you guys want? I just didn't want to carry on too long. There's a lot to go through with GBOS, so.
Any other questions for James? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to the next projects. Wish you the best of luck, James. It sounds exciting.
Thank you, sir.
Number four, presentation, Community Land Trust. Crystal, you around? Oh, there it is.
Hi, everybody. And I'm here to present on Girdwood Community Land Trust. This has been conversation ongoing for over a year on, on my side. And so just wanted to touch base and let you know where we are and what our goals are looking like. Not looking for action tonight and
She froze up. Is anybody there? Everybody freeze up? Can you guys hear me? Oh, come on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Now we can.
Okay, something happened there. It is all froze up. Everybody's back.
I've been there before. Don't worry.
Presentation is not up, Kyle. Can you get the presentation back up?
There it is. Okay.
Okay, go ahead and move down to the next slide there. Okay. So these are the basic agreements. So tenants living on CLT land for housing purposes must reside as a primary residence. So one thing we don't want to do is create additional housing for second homeowners as that's one of the primary reasons why this project would be developed. The goal will be to create realistic price points and rents for the community realistic employee wages that are being paid nearby. And that, that would be set by the CLT board. Short-term rental covenant, there would be no short-term rentals allowed on the CLT land. Again, this is for people that live here, work here and have resided in the community and intend to continue to do so. This with community longevity may have priority and tenant user selection. So this is one of the things that is pretty interesting about a CLT is that it's been used as a social justice tool to fight gentrification. And a very easy example of that would be for a child that grew up in Girdwood, you know, early on in the seventies, eighties and their parents owned house. And now that they would maybe potentially be able to buy a house, it's out of their price point. So if we were able to keep members of the community that are long, long time residents, that would kind of be a target market for who would be able to utilize this land. The community uses that have been identified by the CLT are housing and we like we gently use the word affordable because it needs to be, one, we need to be able to develop it. And two, affordable means very certain things for for federal regulation. And so we are targeting our development towards workforce and community housing. So gardening and greenhouses, recycling, compost, alternative waste options, alternative energy creation and storage, trails, parks. And the uses that would require not only the CLT board approval, but also land use approval and GBOS. And I, we wanted to make that clear that we're not gonna just be able to do whatever we want with the land, that there will be a process that the public is involved in, in determining uses on the land. So that would definitely be very clear and outlined for commercial uses, industrial, light industrial and community buildings. Another important aspect, especially as it relates to Girdwood, would be a commitment to conservation. So we would be requesting a total of 54 acres be moved to the Girdwood Community Land Trust. And of those 54 acres, only 10 acres would be developed, I should say, a maximum of 10 acres would be developed over the next 10 years for housing and building development, which would be less than 20% of the acreage that would go to the CLT. And then a minimum of 50% of the total land in the Girdwood Community Land Trust shall be permanently dedicated to natural environment preservation. So I think it's really clear that Girdwood has a commitment to conservation and it's important for us in, in many ways, including our economy. As to why so many people come to visit Girdwood is because of our beautiful natural spaces. But we also do have community needs and know where to put them. So that would be the purpose as to why a CLT is needed in our community. And this is being drawn from months of surveying the community and also into acreage sizes that was suggested among those surveys. And also I did receive a a vote of confidence in regards to the Community Land Trust model from Girdwood Alliance. Although we have not had a board meeting to determine the 54 acres, but I would say the majority of our board members was higher than, than 54 acres in what they suggested was transferred. And also in general, community-wide, the responses as to how many acres should be transferred was considerably higher with a very, very high average, I might add. So anyway, I feel like this is being conservative, but also trying to meet what our needs are in the community. Thank you. And are there any questions?
Somebody's gotta have a question.
I was asked to keep this in five minutes. It's a huge topic to keep in five minutes. So there is a considerable post on girdwoodalliance.org that the title of it is, is a community land trust right for Girdwood? And it lies out, it lays out an article and history about CLTs and also many, many videos for those that are interested in learning more. I do have a group of over 30 people that are interested in participating on the board, learning more and, or being a tenant on the land.
We do have one question for Christina Coe Henderson.
Hi, Crystal. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the detail beyond what was presented at the land use committee. Can you explain a little bit further the formality of the surveys and where on the website one could derive those in order to demonstrate the feedback that you've received from the community in the past year you've been working on this?
So the, the results are not directly published. They were shared with Girdwood Alliance board members. And I could, you know, upon request probably remove personal information and then share those more broadly, but they do include people's names and email addresses and it's kind of a political standpoint. And so I wouldn't want to share that information. But every, almost everyone is identified by a name. So as far as how technical it was, we can identify exactly who it was that took it.
Any further questions?
I don't see any.
Okay. Good luck, Crystal. Thank you very much.
Thanks. I just realized if we, and I believe this is, this is the same presentation that land use had. If you go down one more, it lays out the parcels.
Oh, yeah. We do have one question from Ron Tenny. How is it affordable?
Well, what we're trying to do Well, what we're trying to do is get to, what my goal is, is to stay at or below the median price point in Anchorage, which is 350. So uh, from my perspective, somebody that's working at the resort might be able to afford 250 to 350. And we argue, our goal is to um, you know, create nice, affordable, you know, affordable meaning what somebody in our community is making and can afford and or the mortgage that they would be able to qualify. Um, but I don't think that I have to explain to too many people on this call what the price points have been like in Girdwood. So uh, they're considerably higher than that. And we're just trying to make a realistic option for people who want to make Girdwood a permanent residence. And then in regard here is it's listing out the parcels. Um, this is Holton Hills, 40 acres. It's back behind the school. And this one is South Town Site, which Girdwood 2020 had done extensive um, architecture and engineering work uh, over the last decade. And uh, it's, it's zone GC5. There's a potential for childcare there um, with a major site plan review. I see Ron's question as to how you're getting um, the price below that. So uh, one of the ways that CLTs have contributed to other um, communities in other cities across the nation, there are 300 uh, in the United States or around that number. And uh, what they do is they donate the land, which takes out a considerable amount at the expense. And so your development costs uh, end up being what the actual build cost is. And so it saves extensively on the development cost, especially in Girdwood where the most recent land, land parcel just sold for 250,000.
So you obviously are in talks with HLV.
I am making sure that we have community support to move forward and HLV has been aware of my interest in this endeavor.
Okay, just glad to make one comment. I'm not sure if it, if um, Ron's question was completely answered, but they work really well where land cost is high because the Community Land Trust keeps ownership of the land. And when you, when you buy a property, you're literally buying the property, not the land underneath it. There's long-term lease. So it takes away the cost of land from the house, cost of the house. So that's why the price point is lower.
Okay, any further questions? Hearing none, I'm gonna move on. Uh, next up, number five, legislative report. Uh, Jennifer Johnson, Kathy Geisel, John Wilton, and Susan France. I think John is on the call on the Zoom. John, you have anything to add?
Everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep. Well, I won't take a lot of time. Um, welcome, Brianna. Um, it's nice to see you on the um, G-Boss. It's gonna be a great experience for you. And James, that aquaponics sounds just amazing. I mean, I can't believe that stuff can work in Alaska and it's really tremendous. I'm looking forward to seeing that set up and going. Um, I just wanted to cover a few things that we're working on. Um, I'm sure you guys have heard about the potential purchase of the four buildings um, for a home of shelter, some transitional housing, and then perhaps buying Beans Cafe next to Brother Francis so we can use that to set up um, to house supportive um, services there for the people at Brothers Francis. Excuse me. And then also potentially purchase a Golden Lion as a substance abuse um, long-term recovery um, location. And that would be using um, funds from the MLMP sale where we're required to spend $50 million on essentially that substance recovery um, place. And that sale should we expect to close in October. Um, we have had amazing amount of um, public input on it, three nights of public hearings, another one tomorrow. And if we finish tomorrow, then we'll deliberate and make some decisions on which way to head with this on Thursday. So if you have any thoughts on that, feel free to share them now or, you know, email all of us or call in tomorrow. Um, we are looking at other uses of CARES Act funds. And we recently in June, uh, meeting, committed 10 million to childcare um, to help childcare owners um, kind of keep uh, keep going because people need that to work. Um, 5 million in small business grants, 2 million uh, in rent and mortgage assistance, and then 3 million for wildfire and trail work. Most of that would go to wildfire, cutting down uh, dead spruce bark killed trees. Um, and relatively small dollar amount with trails, but um, as you guys have worked on trails, you know, you get a huge amount of trail work done for, you know, 100 or 200,000 dollars. So hopefully we'll get some great trails and and also employ a lot of people making those trails. Um, the, and then of course, the Little Bears and um, the clinic and the administration has been just fantastic and kind of really supportive of doing something to expand those using CARES Act funds, which is very appropriate given the um, the nature of those um, facilities and particularly because they're in Girdwood. And if you get cut off from the rest of Anchorage, as you know, you're stuck. That's what you've got. And um, with the new CDC guidance with separation and so on, the current facilities don't really work. So I'm really optimistic about something getting done. Um, there's, there's a few little twists and turns in it that we may stumble on, but I think if we don't actually get them done, we'll make a huge amount of headway on that. So those are a few of the big ones. I've got questions. I'm here. Um, kind of mostly here to listen in.
Thanks, John. Uh, anybody have any questions for?
I, I do have a question for you, John. Um, what's the, what's your sense of um, time scale for the CARES Act funding in general?
Well, we um, kind of the broad picture is that it is supposed to be used essentially by the end of the year. Um, and it's for um, the things that were impacted by COVID from March 30th through the end of the year. Um, that would include like in the case of the buildings, because of the um, CDC guidelines for shelters, um, most of the shelters had to cut their capacity substantially. And that's why we had to scramble and put people in Sullivan Arena, Ben Bokey. Uh, but those are really expensive to maintain. So um, the CARES Act lets us um, actually build things to um, kind of maintain the things we had to do for COVID. Um, the other stuff, we're trying to get a lot of that spending out the door quick, you know, the need, um, you know, the kind of the boost from unemployment is likely to end um, I think July 1. And that's been substantial for people. The moratorium on evictions um, is about the state ends, I think, the end of this month. And we may, we have something on our agenda for our next meeting to um, the 28th to perhaps extend that. Uh, but we want to get the money out the door now and help um, you know, businesses and individuals. Does that answer your question, Mike?
It does. The, one of the reasons I'm, I asked the question was I noticed we have uh, we have a request for resolution support for the childcare and health, healthcare, CARES Act funding in our new business. And I'm wondering if it makes sense for us to move that to, or to see if we can move that to our business so we could actually do something now rather than wait another month.
Uh.
I don't want to preempt your, your talk. I'm just thinking about that in the background.
No, it makes sense, you know, but however you, if you have ideas on uses, um, we pretty much, we're, we're pretty dialed in with the clinic and the Little Bears. But if you have other uses, email them uh, to Suzanne and me. And, and because we are having discussions as assembly again. And of course, we have probably 500 million dollars in requests and we have about 160 million. So, you know, we're kind of prioritizing this stuff. But, you know, we're trying to do all we can. And childcare is ranked very high in what seems like most of us want to help because of the um, you know, there's been not enough childcare typically. And, and now um, people can't get back to work because they can't find childcare. So that's been a constraint, you know, spreading through the whole economy.
Get your question answered, Mike?
Yes, thank you.
We have another question. We have another question from Connor. Can John talk about his resolution regarding Captain Cook's statue?
Oh, yeah, happy to. You know, there was um, um, I guess we know with, you know, kind of a new mood in the country, which I think is in a lot of ways going to be very challenging, but is also an opportunity to fix some things that are wrong. Um, and the statue of Captain Cook, um, there's been some move, I don't think it was too intense, you know, tear it down or move it. And the mayor, um, kind of acknowledgement that we have a tribal government here in town, kind of offered it to Native Villages of Acclutina to um, say, but what do you guys want to do with it? Do you want to handle this? And uh, for, and, and the chief, Aaron Leggett, he might be chief, he might be the president. I'm not quite sure with the craziness there. But he, so he would essentially be leading that effort, is my understanding. And, and he is a very reasonable person. Um, he's a curator at the museum. So this kind of thing is kind of where his head is at. And, you know, I expect actually that it would turn out pretty well and that the intent would be to really broaden the message from that monument, which would be really nice. I'd be surprised to see it moved because that's prime real estate. And if you want to send a message of, about um, kind of the people who were here when Cook showed up, that would be the location to do it. Um, but at the same time, we have policies in place regarding these use of, you know, art and statues and so on. And those really need to be followed. So my resolution really just highlighted, these are policies in place and we should follow these. And um, so I expect that will happen. They don't, but they don't really get in the way of having close involvement by Native Villages of Acclutina. It just says you also have to involve Arts Commission, Parks and Rec because it's in a park. Um, I think there are a couple others too. Um, so it just really broadens the effort. And it could be that's where it would have gone anyway. I just wanted to kind of highlight these things. We have these policies. Let's follow them.
Any other questions for John? Hearing none. I am gonna move forward. Thanks, John.
All right, you bet. I'll, I'll be here for a while.
Yeah, appreciate you looking in. Um, I don't think there's anybody else from the legislature on the Zoom meeting. So I'm gonna move on to supervisory reports. And for my report on public safety, I don't know how much. We had our first public safety action committee meeting, advisory committee meeting, I guess it is, um, in July. We hadn't had one recorded before. So uh, but everything seems to be going fairly smooth with the Whittier Police Department. And I don't really have much to go on. There is a, there it is. On the screen now is the statistics for June. And I don't know, Kyle, the chief, is he on here?
I don't think he is on tonight.
Okay, so I'll just kind of cover, you know, you can see there the numbers for the month of June. One thing they're still doing is they're still maintaining a police presence on the Alaska Highway and Crow Creek Road for traffic enforcement, which we've encouraged them to continue to do and slow the traffic. But other than that, I don't have much else for public safety and/or the PSAC report, unless there's a PSAC representative online who'd like to speak. Hearing none, I'm gonna go forward next. Roger Utility, James.
I just have one question for you, Jerry. Um, I know you may not be able to answer this, but um, in the other column, is that wildlife or is some of that wildlife calls? I know in the past, um, the chief has pulled out wildlife as being a separate section. I wondered if that means there's none or it's just been folded into other.
It's been folded into others because there's a lot.
Okay, that has been a lot, right?
Yeah, so you know, he is, um, that's one of their biggest, you know, activities right now is, you know, bears.
Right.
So they get a lot of calls for bears. And so yes, that's in the other.
Thank you.
Um, Rogan Utilities, James.
I have nothing to report at this time. Kyle and the, and the guys have been doing a great job. And um, everything looks pretty good around here. So um, that's it. Only good news.
Okay, next, I'm filling in for uh, Parks, Recs and Cemetery. There's nothing on Cemetery. Parks, uh, the Trails Committee did have a meeting on July 7th. Um, the minutes are included in the, the packet here tonight. Everybody I think knows hand trams closed for the rest of the year. Virgin Creek work is waiting for an archaeological study. The Girdwood Valley Service Area has hired Amanda and Zach for the summer crew. Andy's working on phase two of the Lower Iditarod Trail. Those are kind of the major things going on with the trail work. Um, other than that, I don't have much from Parks and Rec or Cemetery unless anybody has a question. We're gonna go on to Aaron, Fire Department.
Yes. Um, so there've been a couple of uh, fire board meetings in the last month that I've attended. Um, they had their election and they have two new fire board members onboard, Paula Bogdan and Larry Daniels. And um, so they're transitioning in. Deb Essex and Ben Habacher have um, agreed to stay on to make sure the transition goes well. And also, they're in the middle of revising their bylaws. Um, Deb did a lot of work on that. So they're um, working on trying to get those approved. And um, I don't know if, is Michelle on now?
She should be.
She had to go, she had to go to another meeting, but I think she's coming back.
Okay.
Did you text her?
Hey, I'm on.
I'm on. Can you hear me?
There you are.
Hold on, let me just put on, sorry, I'm just meeting bouncing. It's like craziness. Hold on. Uh, let me see if I can get my video on. Oh, apparently not.
We can hear you.
We can hear you, Michelle.
Uh, yeah, I, well, I don't want to uh, get in the way of what Aaron's saying, so.
No, I was gonna turn it over to you. I just kind of gave a little update on the fire board and their new members.
Okay. Um, so yeah, uh, so fire report. Sorry, I can't for some reason get the video to come on, although it was just on on the other meeting. Um, uh, so uh, let me see if that works. No, it doesn't. Okay, I'll start video. Um, so uh, we are on 238 runs so far. Um, we have been quite busy in the last little bit. Uh, had a number of high-intensity calls in the last week. Um, but everything's going well. COVID-wise, we're doing well. Budget-wise, not so much. Uh, but part of that is getting the other COVID expenses paid back to us from the municipality, uh, which we were working on this past week. And then, um, we are still on track to probably have budget problems in the fourth quarter, but that should be no surprise to anybody. Um, and so I'm hoping that contract negotiations will resume with the municipality of Anchorage. Uh, we are having some challenges with staffing. Um, as you know, we continue to lose staff or firefighters to full-time employment related to COVID and then also related to just, you know, other opportunities with other fire departments. So we train people up and then they go to either the Kenaia Matsu or AFD. AFD is having another round of hiring uh, this fall. And so I expect we'll probably lose another five. Um, and so I'm hoping to bring on some more community members this October, although it will be dependent on budget. If we have budget, if we don't have budget, we won't. Um, and then I'm sort of doing contingency planning for if we don't have enough budget to fill up the end of the year. Um, so ideas would be possibly just shrinking our fire response area or EMS response area just to um, the Girdwood Valley, which is our service area, if we cannot resolve the issues of uh, being reimbursed for extrication services and everything else on the, on the Seward Highway. Um, so I am hopeful that we will get additional funding from AFD, but we're basically hitting that point where, um, you know, as our insurance costs go up 25% and we continue to have a flat budget for the last three years, um, with a little incremental increase, um, we are having problems. So basically, that's my report. Questions?
I don't hear any questions. Thank you very much, Michelle. And thanks for all the good work the fire department does in keeping us safe. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up, Land Use, Mike.
Hi, we had a Land Use meeting uh, last Monday, and I think everything on the agenda there is on the agenda again tonight here. Um, the Title 121, Chapter 9, the Housing Working Groups are both um, on suspension while we uh, go through the COVID crisis, but we have an item later on the agenda tonight which will allow them to restart, which I'm looking forward to. Um, although it isn't technically under GBOS, imagine Girdwood is going strong. And we have a um, a meeting on Wednesday at 6 o'clock. Many people will have received. Many people will have received a reminder in their email. But for those who, I'm going to read out the meeting number and password so it goes into the record and appears in the minutes. So we have a meeting on Zoom meeting on Wednesday at 6 o'clock. 836-1555-4087. The password is 955645. And I'm sure that Margaret will put that in the minutes and it'll be there for everything else. Oh, and Crystal's put it into the, I think that's perfect. Crystal's also put it into the chat. So people of all can come along to that. We're discussing, we have a gold vision, a vision, goals, policy document, which kind of forms the cornerstone of the whole plan, which we're going to, we're going to finally, we're going to do a final review of and then put it out to the public after this meeting. So it's a good opportunity to see where we are. That's it for Land Use.
Thanks, Mike. Next up, public comment. Person offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subject not listed on the agenda. And I see two things on the chat. I don't know. That was just from Crystal, I guess.
Julie Raymond Yocobian has raised her hand for public comment.
Okay, Julie, go ahead.
I can hear you.
Julie Raymond Yocobian, Box 924, Girdwood. I'm making public comment tonight to request that G-Boss revisit your procedures for considering out of area requests. I personally find that the procedures are kind of confusing in terms of what's required from Land Use Committee to move something on to G-Boss. And the procedures are also erroneously conflate the ex officio community council status of G-Boss with the service area board status. And the policy also conflicts with your G-Boss's operating procedures, which state that luck advises G-Boss on land use issues. And so I'd like to request that you put those procedures on an upcoming agenda to revisit, clarify and discuss them. Thanks.
Mike, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'd actually like to perhaps offline get some more detailed comments from Julie. And then I think we should work on that. That's a good idea. But I'll reach out to Julie to get more detail than you're able to say.
Sure.
Thanks.
New comments? Any other public comment?
I have one. This is Crystal Hope and I would like to provide an update for Little Bears. Assemblymember Weddleton kind of already started in regards to the Girdwood Health Clinic and also childcare proposal that's being put forward for CARES Act funding. We are in discussions with Aliaska Resort to build a building. If the funds were to come through, there's discussions to build on Aliaska land. They are open to a very flexible and inexpensive contract via lease. And actually, I should back up and say, there is an additional possibility on HLB land. So the the HLB land is already leased through Aliaska and Aliaska feels as though it fits with their lease. So we have have what we need to proceed forward with Aliaska. But from a full disclosure perspective, I would like to find out how Little Bears can protect the assets longer than the lease term. And so that is kind of yet to be determined. But just know that it's something that is on my mind and we're working towards. But basically, we have been surveying the community for childcare needs and we have received responses of in excess of 100 kids that need care. Currently in the Little Bears building, it, the maximum occupancy is 30 and that does include teachers. So we really have a lot more kids that need to be served in our community. And now that we're, now when you add in the additional space required for COVID and social distancing, we really need a much larger building than what has been proposed previously. And so we are working on all of those things. If anybody would like to help or participate, please reach out to me. You can email me at executivedirector@girdwoodalliance.org. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move on from there. That also is kind of on the agenda, Crystal, for later. Number 15, we do have a resolution of support for that. So I think we'll talk about that a little later more. Any other public comment? Hearing none, I'm going to move on.
Can I, sorry, Jerry, can I interrupt? There's, I would like to suggest a change to the agenda. I know we've already adopted the agenda, so I think this actually, under Robert's rule, requires a two thirds majority. But I'm going to request based on John's comments earlier, John Weddleton's comments, that it may be behoven for us to look at a resolution of support for the Girdwood Health and Child Care Act and try and act on that tonight. So I'm going to request that we move item 15 to the end of old business and before new business.
Okay, I would entertain, well, you've made a motion.
I made a motion.
A second. Looking for a second.
I'll second the motion.
Further discussion. Anybody have any problems with this? Hearing none, call for a vote.
A roll call. Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Mike Edgington.
Yes.
Jerry Fox.
Yes.
Aaron Boone.
Yes.
James Glover.
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, old business. Number seven, discuss agenda topics for MOA GBOS quarterly meeting scheduled for July 27, 2020 at 4:00 PM via Teams. The topics under discussion have included the following, the CARES Act funding and Girdwood projects, AFD and GFR contract negotiations. Anybody have any, anything else?
I have one other topic, which is going back and looking at the Secure Trash Regulation Zone and just reviewing that, how successful it's been or otherwise.
That sounds like a good idea.
Also, the area wide EMS funding.
Yeah, and that's part of the AFD-GFR contract negotiations.
Yeah, I would agree there. And I think there's a broader question there as well. We could potentially touch on.
When you're saying broader, just you're talking about?
I'm talking about, Bill made a comment in, Bill made a comment in earlier meetings that once they found a mismatch between the spending of these two things, there really should be a resolution municipal wide. And I'd like to discuss that.
Okay. For me, just, I would kind of prefer to keep it under the contract negotiations and not talk about too much about the area wide, but it'll come up because it's the same top topic. But, you know, I don't believe they're going to do anything and change the way they fund the fire department in Anchorage. But we can bring it up.
Yes, we did discuss it with him before, so I think it'd be good to follow up on. And the other thing was COVID funding for fire department. For this, they've had an issue in getting reimbursed for COVID funding.
Yes. And I don't know if the chief is still on, but they were going to work on that this week.
Yeah. And so we're working on some of it. I might need your assistance because I've been asking them to bill for false alarm billing and also for out of area fire response billing for 2019 and they haven't yet. And so that's another one that's out there that I'm hoping, you know, I have a paper trail of me asking them repeatedly to bill for it since we have budget problems and they haven't. So I'm hoping that's hopefully resolved by the time you have your meeting, but that might have to be a topic. And then, and then my understanding in talking to the municipality is that they will not be switching the taxation structure to address the fire EMS imbalance in the funds before the election. They won't be doing it. So, anyway.
Weddleton, comment on that.
Yeah, John, go ahead.
That may be true, but that's if the administration initiated it. And if I can figure out a decent way to make that happen sooner, then I will do that. I have, it's on my list of things that I'm scratching my head. So Michelle, feel free to email or call.
Okay. And then, and then just another update on the contract is that AFD has not moved it forward to the municipal manager. They're holding it. And so they asked for different documentation based on past experience. And so I said, well, it's a contract negotiation, so we're telling you a service level of what we're trying to provide. And then additionally, because we had just put down EMS and extrication services on the Seward Highway, they asked us to also include the fire service protection area as well. And in other words, the G-Boss budget, which hadn't been talked about before and we weren't requested to do that before. So they just asked us to do that as well. And so they wanted us to bid the whole contract. And just, just in terms of, okay, let's say they decide, no, we're not going to, we're not going to give you the extra 200 or more $1,000. The only option by IFF contract would be to go with IFF. So that would be having Station 9 come down and do extrication or EMS services for the Seward Highway. So there's not a lot of other options.
To be discussed. Anything else for the MOA meeting? Hearing none, I'm going to move on. Number eight, review and vote to update GBOS rules and procedures to allow subcommittees to meet via teleconference. Mike, a lot of these subcommittees have to do with you. So you want to speak?
Sure, I'll speak to it. This is actually our first draft. I have a slight adjustment to this, which I prefer, but honestly, it doesn't make much difference. So the two things, two things this covers are, first of all, we had, we originally had a setup for, actually, could you, Kyle, can you present the item from the meeting packet, please? So the two things is to, is to basically make ad hoc committees, which are the ones which are non-permanent. So there are things like Housing Working Group, Trails Master Plan, things like this. One is to, is to just fix some language where we had, where we had some specifics about what they're supposed to do for posting, whereas elsewhere, we've made it, we've put it in one place and made everything reference at one place. So that's just sort of putting in a reference rather than a, rather than explicit language. I think that's uncontroversial. The first pass, we wanted to sort of just clean up the list of committees, of ad hoc committees. For example, I'd actually suggest a slight change of language, but I'll come back to that. And the other thing is in meetings, we originally had that we would continually sort of extend every meeting. We'd extend for another month, the remote meeting policy. That was kind of in the early days of COVID, when we were all hoping this would be a very short term and it maybe cover a meeting or two. I think a better, this is a language actually suggested by Margaret and I really like it. It just ties the end of that to the end of the public, the end of the municipal proclamation of emergency. So we continue to do vote meetings until the emergency is declared over. So there are the three changes. What I was going to suggest for examples of ad hoc committees is to actually keep the full list that was originally in there, but just have examples of current and past ad hoc committees are. So just keep, not change the list, but just change the language that shows these not all current committees to save any confusion there.
Seems like you say, it seems pretty non-confrontational. Anybody have any comments or questions? Seems to make sense to me.
I'd like to thank Margaret for finding, Margaret for identifying some of these issues and helping with the language.
Mike, what did you say about the, did you say you do or don't want to change where you list the different?
I do, but not quite as presented here. So what I would recommend, so the first paragraph, we're recommending, I'm recommending the changes that are there. The last part, I'm recommending the change there. The second paragraph, instead of taking out some of the committees which no longer exist and putting in others, I'm suggesting keeping everything in there, but just changing the wording, changing the wording at the beginning. So it says examples of current and past ad hoc committees. So rather than trying, because attempting to keep it current all the time might be work. So if we just acknowledge this is, you know, some examples we've had in the past, some examples we have now, we don't specify which, then it just, it just makes it easier to not have to do maintenance on that long term. We can maintain it from time to time, but we don't have to do it every time.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So I would move that we make the changes in the first paragraph, the last paragraph as displayed. And then the second paragraph would say examples of ad hoc, of examples of current and past ad hoc committees of the GBOS are, and then keep the complete list.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none, call for a vote. Kyle?
Roll call. Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Jerry Fox.
Yes.
Mike Edgington.
Yes.
Aaron Boone.
Yes.
James Glover.
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Okay, thanks, Mike, for, thanks, Margaret.
Thanks, Margaret.
Yeah, thank you, Margaret, as always. Number nine, GBSA Alberg Road Repay Project Update. Kyle.
So to follow up on where we're at with this, at the last meeting, I informed you that to do the repay project on it, it would require us to do significant improvements to the intersections where the bike path and the Alberg Road come together, which would be well outside of what budget funding we have available to do, to repave. The intention is, is to grind and repave Alberg Road from basically the day lodge to the hotel where a section was, the final section was completed just three years ago. And so at this point in time, we are looking at how to do the section where from Moose Meadows to the hotel, there's, there's no direct connection there except for Verbier, which we probably could afford to tie in the bike path with the new swoop requirements that are required by traffic. In that section, we could also tie in, probably afford the new guard rails and then the replacement of all the drainage, which was going to be in the original bid. But this probably would be an add alt for the, for the guard rail. We just sent the, we just went through the plans and redrafted the plans and we sent them around for initial check with the different departments that are responsible for it. And right now, we are working on the cost estimate and make sure that we're still within budget to do that. Now that it's mid-July, we're getting tentative about trying to pull that off this year and instead get it all together and bid it this winter. We're also concerned that contractors are pretty overwhelmed at this point as winter is starting to not be far away in construction world. And it may be difficult to get a good bid and a competitive bid at this process. So, so this next week, we will know more about the cost estimates and we'll have a larger discussion with the project managers about if we're going to push forward this year. But most likely, we will probably wait till next year. If we do look like it is feasible to push forward this year, then we'll probably call for a special meeting at GBOS to discuss the project and, and go over with you the intentions or the plans that we have before doing anything. So that's, that's where we're at this point.
Thanks, Kyle. Do you have to do any remedial work if you don't do the work this summer? Is there any potholes you're going to have to patch or anything?
We've done a little bit already, just because there's some aging. But that was mostly because we had extra asphalt. We had other repairs in Town Square and down in Old Town where we had manholes that had lifted and we had to get them with better lips on them so that the piles weren't hitting them in the winter. So we just took what extra asphalt we had on that and did some, some real patching up there. So we just took what extra asphalt we had on that and did some, some real patching up there.
Any other questions for Kyle? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to item 10 of the agenda. GBSA Industrial Yard Lot, Proposal to Bring Electric Power to the Parcel Update, Kyle, again.
So we are working with Chugash Power. Currently, right now, the only power source that we have for the Gerwood Industrial Lot, the Gerwood Street Maintenance Lot down there is a remote pedestal that is next to a transformer down there. And it's not on our lot, it's actually across from our lot. So in the winter, when they plug in, all the equipment is across from our lot and it's kind of crammed together on the, on the new lots that HLB is developing down there. And what we like to do is bring power to the, to the Gerwood Board, or the Gerwood Service Area Street Maintenance Lot and have position a transformer there where we can put a power source to our bull rail down there and the contractor can plug in their equipment and then we can provide lighting for the yard. Right now, we don't have any lighting for the area and so the winter, those guys are moving around with headlamps. So it's just a continual improvement that we're trying to do. The total would be seventeen thousand dollars, or eight, basically eighteen thousand dollars is the estimate we've gotten from Chugash. And what they would do is trench in a line from the existing pedestal and create a new power pedestal within our parcel. And then from there, we would hire an electrician to probably at first put a temporary pedestal in, just transfer what we have right now. And then probably next year, in 2021, in the spring, we would electrify the bull rail and then set up a more permanent electrical system down there. That's all I got.
So you're looking for a vote on this tonight, right?
Correct, and we, we would use this money from our capital account.
And, you know, you're making an upgrade here and then you're talking about future upgrades for the bull rail. And so you're assuming you're going to use the same lot for the foreseeable future.
In the short term, yes. We haven't really talked about moving at all and we've been developing that lot now for, as long as I've been here, 10 years and, or nine years. And, and no, I don't foresee us moving anywhere. Nothing else is really suitable for us at this point.
And HLB is kind of saying you're okay staying on that lot for the foreseeable future?
Yes, they, they are supportive of it, they're supportive of this move and they're trying to see if they, if we're able to make this work with Chugash, there are other lots down there looking for power. And so we're trying to see if maybe we can do several connections at once, if that, if that would work out.
I know Shelley's on, I'm looking here, Shelley's on. Do you have any comments, Shelley?
Kyle, sorry, this is James. I did want to say, we just did open dialogue. So maybe somehow, if this permitting process goes through, we can somehow work together with Alaska Aquaponics to get power to both lots. Maybe that would be a leg, you know, a foot in the door as well.
Correct. Good.
When I mixed, this is Shelley, I'm exploring with Chugash is combining the work for the power to the GBSA lot as well as where Alaska Aquaponics would go and another one of our lesses and permittees. So we're looking at four, possibly four actions with Chugash and would hope that doing those together would achieve some efficiencies, whether those are financial or just operational and construction wise, we don't know yet, we're still waiting on them. But if that were the case, then we would likely, HLB would go ahead and pay for the whole thing and then assess each of our tenants or permittees, the appropriate amount for their, for their work.
So I'm a little confused, if we approve the eighteen thousand, is it possible that HLB will pay for this instead? And then we just have a little higher lease?
Um, no, you would reimburse us immediately. So, yeah.
Potentially for less. If there's, if there's a, if there's a, if there's efficiency.
Yeah, it's doubtful, I think we're going to realize the efficiencies in making sure that things are installed where they need to be installed for future roadwork and utility work, making sure that that's not done haphazardly. Jobs.
Sorry, Shelley, do you have any sense of, of when you'll have a better picture of whether that can be done?
Um, I'm going to really push them in the next two weeks. I've, I've been waiting over a month for them to, to get back to me. One of the problems that they have, and I've tried to explain to them that Gerwood's a little bit different. Generally, they don't power the lots with permanent power until there's a structure. They want to see construction drawings and all that kind of stuff. And I'm trying to explain to them that we're just trying to plug in equipment down here for the most part. So that's something that they're having to kind of get past. So hopefully, we can, we can get there.
I'm going to ask you an easier question now. When do you think, when do you think there'll be more lots platted and available?
Oh, gosh, of course, Rob is listening in.
I'll said nine, Kyle said he's been waiting nine or 10 years. Do you think it'll be another nine or 10 or less than that?
Oh, gosh, I hope not. I, Robin will tell you, I am trying to generate income in any way that I can figure out how to finish the industrial park. That I think is our number one priority. So if we were to, oh, Robin unmuted herself, she's, she's waiting. We, you know, if, if we, if we can figure out a way to fund that, we want to. We do have some areas that we intend to look at with Kyle and Robin in the next couple of weeks that could be some more temporary permit areas before something is plotted. So we may be able to get more tenants than there before plating moves forward. Robin?
This is Robin Warren, I'm the Director of HLB. I feel like we're putting quarters, though, in a coffee can, because this is going to be somewhere between three and a half to four, maybe four and a half million dollars to complete. And we would do it all, because it doesn't make sense to just do phase two. We would do phase two and phase three, because the lift station has to be put in and that is a large part of that, probably about a million dollars. So we're going to do everything we can, but frankly, we have to find a very creative way or grant something to be able to finish that, because it's, we're not going to make it on just permit and lease revenue. Sorry, I just want to be realistic.
Yes.
I'm trying to calculate how many quarters you need for four and a half million. I, I calculate that very quickly, it's eighteen million, but that doesn't matter.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
So my only comment is it seemed, to me, it seems like we might be, we might be about a month too early to discuss this. I would suggest maybe we look at it again next month when Shelley has more information.
Kyle, we wait a month, is that a problem?
No, I think it's fine. I mean, you know, hopefully, Chugash, I would like to have it in this winter, but we have lived, we have lived with, so. But if we want to wait to see for procedure, yeah, I'm fine with another month.
Is it likely, is it likely the waiting another month will stop it from, I know there's, there's always some risk, but is it likely that another month's delay would stop it from being done for this winter?
It just probably depends on Chugash's schedule, and I haven't talked to them recently to see where they are, but it'll just be a Chugash crew, they'll come out and trench that line in and then get everything set up. So, you know, we, we dig well into October on a, on a project like this. So I think it's still doable, but it's just seeing if Chugash will be able to pull it off. So I, what I can do is I can start to see, set the seed with Chugash and if it looks like, you know, and I'll just tell them, we'll know more in August and then from there, we can get going.
One suggestion I have, Kyle, is that we just, if you need it, we can put it as part of one of our budget meetings. Just have a special meeting then. So we have one for the 28th and one for August 5th. So if we got more information, we could do one then. That make sense?
Makes sense, and I'll talk with Chugash this week to find out what scheduling looks like.
I have one other question related to that. This is the cost for the initial, like laying the power line. You mentioned there's some other work that needs to be done next spring. Is that, do you know the approximate cost for that?
No, I don't. It would just be, I think in the, in the short run, we'd be hooking up a temporary pedestal, like you would find on a home build lot. And then that's essentially what we've had now, we've had that for as long as the new pedestal. See, Chugash, the industrial lot got power when the second feeder line came into Gerwood underground. And at that point, we tapped into that and we've had a temporary pedestal ever since. So we would probably get a contractor to give us a bid on what it'd be to hook up, take our pedestal and hook it up to the new transformer. So I don't have that money at this point. This is just for Chugash to give us that green box that we can hook into.
Okay, thanks, Kyle.
Any other questions? I think we are going to leave this, if everybody is okay, with, we'll leave this and not vote on it this evening. Unless anybody asks to make a resolution otherwise. I'm going to move forward, not hearing anything else. Okay, number 11.
Was someone, it almost sounded like someone was trying to talk.
Oh, I think it's just, I, Robin's on her phone, so there's some background noise that will come in, so I muted her.
Okay.
I think we're going to move on. Number, item number 11, Agenda Item LUC 2007-04 Powder Run Multi-Family Development Project Will Include Nine Two-Story Units, Three Duplex Units, and One Triplex. The CUP Conditional Use Permit Has Been Submitted to the MOA for Review And Public Hearing Is Scheduled for August 3rd For Planning and Zoning. The Presentation Will Be To Provide An Overview Of The CUP, Provide An Update On The Development And Prior Opportunity For The Community Input About The Project. Laquita, I'm not going to, I apologize. Dowell is presenting.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay?
I'm going to make you host. Let me stop the share here. And then now you are host, and when you're done, just give it back to me.
Okay, hold on, just a second. There we go. Okay, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So again, my name's Laquita Chmolowski, I'm the Land Use Planning Manager at Dell and I'm here to just give an update on the Powder Run Multi-Family Housing Development and the conditional use that we're working on. So I know a lot of you are very familiar with this project, but I'm just going to give a quick overview. The lot's located at the southwest corner of Gunny Sack and Aliaska Highway. It's a 1.5 acre site that's owned GR1, which is, is multi-family housing is allowed in that zoning district. And as many of you are aware, before we even looked at what kind of development would go on the lot, one of the first things we had to do was pursue a variance for the road construction requirements for Sprout Road, which is the road will take access off of. And so that was granted and we will have a 20-foot wide wrap roadway surface, wide gravel shoulders on either side, and a five-foot wide separated pathway for the portion that's adjacent to our, our project area. So this is the site plan that, that we have for the project. And as you see, there's the roadway upgrades shown on Sprout and that separated pathway will actually tie into a pedestrian pathway that extends on-site and serves all the units. You have the triplex unit on the north side and then the duplex units throughout. There's a spine road that serves all the units. And then these are two-story units with driveways and two-car garages. And then for stormwater runoff, it'll be captured on-site and there'll be an infiltration system that treats and percolates the water into the ground. And then you'll see there's this storm drain line that's shown out to Gunny Sack Road. What that's for is if, we have to design those infiltration galleries for a hundred-year storm event, but in case we had a, a larger storm event or the system needed maintenance, you have an overflow for that stormwater. And in the LUC meeting, what we did talk about was somebody brought up if there was, if it was possible to extend that storm drain line out to the ditch in Aliaska Highway, rather than disturbing the trees and along Gunny Sack. So we are looking at that as part of the land use permit. We have to do a full drainage analysis and so we'll finalize that design as part of that effort. And then there, the site will be served by three wells. That's what these symbols are here and the circles denote the radiuses for the well. And then we'll connect to the sewer main line in Aliaska Highway to serve all the units. So you'll have a single connection that comes into the site and branches out to the units. So one of the things we looked at was very closely was parking, because I know there was concerns about parking overflowing onto Sprout and causing issues for, for neighbors. So by code, we're required to have 22 parking spaces. If you count the two-car garages, the driveways that could accommodate two cars, and we also included six additional spaces on-site, you have 42 parking spaces. And then along with that, although it's not allowed by code, the spine road that serves all the units would allow for parking along it if for some reason someone had a large event. But we did really try to take into account visitor parking and making sure we didn't spill over into the neighborhood and cause an issue. And then I know in the Land Use Committee meeting, there was a lot of discussion about trip generation. So I did go back and look at hotels and motels. And so there isn't a specific use in the, in the trip generation manual that nicely fits this type of development. So we looked at many different types to get a sense of what kind of traffic would be added in the peak hour. And so hotel would generate the largest, but that's per room. So that's just, the 13 trips I'm showing here is assuming that each room would be rented out individually, rather than the, the, it being rented as a unit. So that would be a very conservative trip generation number. And then just for reference, the municipality generally does not require traffic impact analysis until you hit the 100 trips in the peak hour. So although I completely understand we're adding trips to the, to Sprout, it's well below the requirement to, to do any further analysis as far as traffic's concerned. And then I, the other thing that came up in the Land Use Committee meeting was questions about fire. So what you see on the site plan is the fire access that was, is provided. So the fire truck can come on-site and turn around and the hammerhead that's on-site is, is, was designed to meet fire code requirements. And so that red dash line would be your fire truck that's coming on and their turnaround. The green line that is shown is one of the requirements for access is to have all parts of the building within 150 feet of a fire lane. You can use right-ofways as your fire lane as well as on-site. So I just showed the on-site layout, but certainly we have access from Sprout, Gunny Sack and Aliaska Highway, but also we have adequate access around the buildings to meet that code requirement on-site. And then some questions came up about sprinklering the buildings. So the buildings are not going to be sprinkled and, and because of the occupancy and the use, they're not required to be sprinkled. They do have two-hour fire-rated walls between the units, so they do meet the fire code requirements. This will be reviewed by the state fire marshal and as part of the conditional use permit, it will also be reviewed by the municipal fire reviewer for, by safety issues. So this is a rendering of the elevation of the duplex unit. As I mentioned, they're two stories. The, the idea was to have units that were more in line with the surrounding development. I think there was a previous development that had three-story units. So this brings the height down. And then, as I mentioned, they have two-car garages on the first floor and the two bedrooms. And then the living, the kitchen and living room and dining and master bedroom are on the, on the second floor. And the triplex units are essentially the same, they have, they mirror this with just an additional unit. So as, as was mentioned, the conditional use hearings on August 3rd before the Planning and Zoning Commission, it is going to be a virtual meeting. So one thing I would let you guys know is that if you do want to provide public testimony during the meeting, you do need to reach out to the municipality planning department prior to the meeting to get on the list so that they can call you when they get to the public testimony portion. And then I also, also there's the link to City View Portal. So if you go there, you can look at our application package and anything else related to the case. The case packet from the planning staff is typically posted there about a week prior to the hearing. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I'm sure there's comments and questions from the local community. Who wants to start? Anybody from the board? Let's go with the board first. Mike?
I do, I have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you very much for doing the traffic analysis for the, for the different types. I think it, it chose, it chose the range and I suppose a degree of uncertainty there about the STR use type. I would say on the, both the parking and the trip generation, I've been paying more attention to the local short-term rental properties, particularly one I have next door. And I think it's advertised for four bedrooms, but it, most times it's rented, there are three or four cars, occasionally five or six, for the whole period of rental. So that speaks more probably to parking than to trip, but quite often, all of them will leave at the same time, or the majority of them will leave at the same time. So I think it's probably the higher, you know, it probably is close to hotel than, than, you know, timeshare or the other low rates. But thank you very much for doing that. And, and also to responding to some of the other comments.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the board right now? I'm going to make a comment, but I think I'll wait for public testimony. So I'm sure there's somebody out there that wants to testify, make a comment. Who wants to go first?
I don't, oh man. Can you hear me there?
Yeah, Lee, I can hear you.
Hey, hi, this is Leah on Gunny Sack Mine Road. Yeah, so I just wanted to follow up because I had proposed a motion that was voted on at the last meeting, and asking the GBOs Board to, I can't remember the term for it, but basically they're, they're, letter of objection, sorry, thanks Leah, it's a team effort. And so we, going through this application, there were several conditions that were stated to met in the application that were not met. I think that, while I appreciate the chip generation mathematics, I don't think it's, the goal of, of, you know, again, section 69, the conditions, where how does this development meet the character of the neighborhood? And so to even just put a standard number of this, how many, this is how many trips are there, without a comparison, you know, it, it doesn't really give a picture of exactly how this development, you know, works within the neighborhood. The fire question is, is a huge issue. This structure is three times any structure that's located within a, you know, square, a square mile. And we do live in a very fire-hazardous area, a lot of dry days, and, and things can change quite rapidly. And we do not have a hydrant or anything in this area, so that means that our firefighting capacity in our community is extremely limited. So I think those are things that we want to see addressed. I appreciate that it may not be required, but, you know, there's certainly other, other things that need to be considered. So I think we have a set of conditions that we'd probably like to put forth in order for this development to move forward. But yeah, I would just say that I, at this current application, I would have to, again, strongly urge the GBOs Board to object to this application because there's a lot of conditions that are not met, even though they're stated, but thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Anybody else want to comment?
Jerry, if you want to comment as a member of the public, I'll take chair for a period of time.
Well, yeah, I guess you could take chair. I don't know whether you have to, but I don't mind if you do. Sounds like a good idea. I'll, I'll make a comment from a member of the public. I believe the developers tried to make some changes that the community wants, and I really appreciate all the changes the developer has made to try to mitigate their adverse impacts to the community. You know, I would like the community members, especially my neighbors, to understand the process. You know, the process is that they're not asking for a variance. If they're asking for a variance, it would be, they would, it would be above 12 units. They are permitted by code to put 12 units on the lot. They just need a conditional use permit. But a conditional use permit has to be approved by planning and zoning. And, you know, planning and zoning very rarely does not allow a conditional use permit to go through. I don't know that I've ever remembered one. But a lot of times, planning and zoning will place restrictions on the developer so that they do not impact the local surrounding properties. One of the aspects of the municipal code, you know, there's under 2103000 Part D. You know, it states that any significant adverse impacts anticipated to result from the use will be mitigated or offset to the maximum extent feasible. And the one thing that I've asked is I have asked continually for some sort of covenant for short-term rentals. Because I believe short-term rentals will significantly adversely impact the, you know, the residential neighbor that butts that zoning. And every time the, the developer said they're thinking about it, but I've never got a confirmation whether there would be any covenants that would have a maximum of, let's say, you know, a month or a maximum, at least a week of short-term rentals. We have a problem with short-term rentals in other neighborhoods in the communities where they're up, you know, where they're in residential districts. Mike can testify to his neighborhood. So I don't know whether the developer can commit to any restriction for short-term rentals at this time. That was my, that's my general objection to this. Other than that, I appreciate all the things they've done.
This is Moses with MCG Building Group. We're the builder and developer of the project. Obviously, with so much uncertainty with the project, we still don't have approval of what exactly the project's going to look like. And to date, I have yet to bring on Jim McCollum, who has done all my association bylaws in the past on other developments, just because we're uncertain. But to commit to a month or even a week minimum would be just not true. I mean, I think that it'll end up being somewhere in the three to five day. You know, we've listened to a lot of, and we've partied in all these meetings and adjusted the project multiple times, from a three-story to a two-story to less units. You know, we want to make this viable on our end as well. Obviously, provide a good product and try and fit in with the neighborhood and the culture of Gerwood. And, but I, I think that, just to be honest, it's going to end up somewhere in the three to five day. I mean, I, you know, if the units would sell all owner-occupied and have no rentals, I would be on board with that too, but that's just not realistic for the market. And obviously, this is a, you know, five, $6 million project that we want to cater to the people that want these units. And we, we've put a lot of feelers in that market and other areas of people that want housing, and we're going to, you know, cater to that. But I would be unable to commit to any minimum or maximum because we just, we don't know what the project is going to look like yet.
Okay, and again, I appreciate all the things you have done to mitigate impacts of the community. Other comments?
Have the chair back now, Jerry.
Oh, thanks.
We need a gavel. I'm going to, I'm going to hit the ground.
For some reason, my screen has changed.
I have a comment. Something else that I know I've brought up, maybe other people have brought up at these meetings before, is not only having like a minimum amount of time for rentals, but considering having a minimum number of owner-occupied units on the site so that, you know, it just guarantees that not every one of those units is going to be used as a vacation rental. Is that anything, is that something you've considered any further?
Yeah, there's some lending guidelines, and I'm not privy to all of them, whether it's FHA, conventional Alaska housing. They require developments to have a certain number of owner occupants. But again, as of now, we're obviously allowed to build five, and the ratio may change if we get the full approval of what we're shooting for. So whether it's one unit, two units, three or four units, of a requirement to meet all the lending guidelines, it's kind of a broad stroke with different rules and regulations to get permitted. But we, again, we don't know just because we're still unsure to date of what the project will end up looking like in its entirety. But yes, there will be some type of owner-occupant ratio just required by the lending guidelines, but I don't know what that is today.
I'm going to go back because I just remembered, Lee, you wrote a letter about wells and fire. Do you want to comment on that? And I don't know whether the project group has had a time to review that letter.
Hi, Jerry, yeah. I believe the last time that this project came up, that was one of the issues that we brought up, was well-service sprinklers. And then Leah actually submitted, are you talking about a letter today?
Yeah, recently.
Oh, that's, let me pass you to Leah.
Hi. So I was just looking up FHA and HUD mortgage lender requirements. And they state for a proposed development, a well must provide at least five gallons per minute to that unit. And if it doesn't provide that, then they have to, then there must be installed a 1,200-gallon storage tank. And I just know that our well is producing 5.3 gallons per minute. So just using that data from, there we go, here's my letter. From, you know, it's just, there's a, there's a pretty good chance that with three wells, they're each, each well would have to be 15 gallons per minute to service those nine units. And, you know, mine's only running at three, at five gallons per minute. So there's a chance, a pretty good chance that three wells wouldn't cover it for, for mortgage lender requirements. And we're not going to know what that well produces until building starts. So like the conditional use that I would request would be, if the wells aren't producing as much water as they should be according to these requirements, then either install more wells or you install these storage tanks. Just so that people can get loans to purchase these properties and the sales of them are viable. That's, that's about it for my new comment.
So I, I would like to clarify on, on the process with the wells permitting. So one thing I'll say is that it's my understanding, and Moses, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that there'll be a test well drilled. And then also, the wells have to be permitted through the Department of Environmental Conservation. So those sorts of issues that you're bringing up would come up at that time, but then it's at the owner's risk. So if they find that they're not getting enough production, then they know that they have to have the water storage tanks or do something else to provide adequate water. So there is, beyond the, the lending is a permitting process for the wells too.
And you're right, Laquita, we'll be doing a test well. And obviously, if our water flow is not where it needs to be, we'll make the necessary adjustments to have holding tanks or hand or nipples or whatever the new and latest and greatest water-holding technology that there is, but.
Are you developing, I'm sorry, continue.
Oh, I was just saying, I mean, I wish I was a water sorcerer and I could tell you what's under the ground, but until we go, I have absolutely no idea what we're going to dive into. I mean, I've fracked wells, I've had less than a gallon a minute on projects, I mean, you name it. So you just never know. I mean, that's a variable that unfortunately we just can't account for.
So are you developing alternate, alternate plans? Like, because right now, your schematic has three wells. So are you developing where?
Well, we plant for the worst, hope for the best. Yeah, I mean, if we found these wells and we don't get the flow rates that are needed, I mean, there'll be holding tanks and all alternative methods. I mean, we've fracked wells. There's an abundance of options out there for water issues. But again, we put our best foot forward and we step in front of challenges and we just solve them. I don't, I don't have the answer to the question today because, again, I haven't done a test well. And I hope I hit wells that pump 50 gallons a minute. I don't, but again, we've done nothing, so we have no answers.
So I'm a little bit confused by what Laquita said. So if it's up to the homeowner to?
No.
Yeah?
Yeah, sorry. So right now, we're in the conditional use permit process. If we are granted the conditional use, or however this project may move forward, during design, there would be the land use permit that get, that gets submitted to the city, overview, and then a permit for the wells through environmental conservation. So it, the, it's really on the developer, if they don't meet the flow requirements, to look at whether it would take storage tanks or whatever you'd implement to mitigate the issue with the fire flow. Wouldn't fall to a, an owner. It'd have to be something that you deal with prior to putting the, the units on the market.
Okay. Copy that. Thanks for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the, the water in that area is very variable. I, I live down two blocks and I get 50-plus, and my neighbor had to re-drill their well. So you never know. We have another comment on the chat, I believe it's from Lewis, and it's again on short-term rentals. And it just states, "The builder-developers reluctant to institute short-term rental covenants means they're obviously building for short-term rentals. These units will sell regardless of covenants, which need to be instituted." So it's just another comment supporting the minimum rental and trying to get away from short-term rentals. Any other comments?
If there are no other comments from the public, I think we, we have a little bit to discuss on process. So I'll, I'm going back to the LUC minutes from last week. So LUC voted to recommend that GBOS write a letter of objection to the Powder Run Development Conditional Use Permit, and that passed by a vote of 16 to 2 with nine abstentions. So that's, although that isn't an action which was requested by the developer and the presenter, that's an action that was requested by LUC. So I think we have that, that question in front of us. And somebody, probably me, because I'm the land use person, I'm going to move that GBOS writes a letter of objection to the Powder Run Development Conditional Use Permit as presented, which is the same language LUC asked us to do. And I said that passed 16-2 with nine abstentions last week. And I happen to have a draft ready for if someone seconds it.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Anybody have any further discussion?
I was going to ask, I believe Margaret, you should have it. I don't remember if I sent it to Kyle as well. It was not, not long before the meeting, an hour or so before this meeting.
Oh, I didn't get it in my email.
I think it went to GBOS. I'll send it now.
Let me see if I can find it.
I'll send it straight to you now, so there's no, I should have done this at the beginning of meeting, sorry.
Well, while you're doing that, Mike, Aaron, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm curious. If we do vote to submit a letter of objection, are there specific? are there specific things that were discussed in land use that we would ask for, that people were asking for? From the developer?
I think I captured those in the letter, but we can discuss that with the, with the help of neighbors to see if I did capture what was meant.
I mean, one of the, the biggest concern for me was the fire protection. And my, although I didn't vote for it during land use, I commented in land use that I still have this objection to not having a covenant for short-term rentals being right next to residential property. We got it.
I was gonna say, I hope you have it now, Kyle.
Yeah, it hasn't showed up yet, but, oh, here it is. Got it. Let me open it up.
And I will state that it's good to put these, you know, what our objection is if we have an objection because planning and zoning, like I said, rarely just says you can't do the projects. They usually allow conditioning use projects with restrictions. So if we have issues, we should state them.
Right. I'll go through this very quickly. I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Margaret format it and fix the spelling mistakes and other terrible grammar and put it on letterhead. It's disappeared from the screen. Here it goes. Coming back. Yeah. So the, the first section is just, and I do apologize for saying MJ2. I misread the application. It should be MJ3. I apologize to the developer. The first section just explains a little bit of the process and then I identified, I think, on all the minutes four objections or four conditions that have been discussed. The first one is of course density. I think a lot of people have objected to density. The second one is the issue of access, and I know we have talked about this multiple times, but then I, I understand it probably isn't practical and I don't think it's likely that P and Z will will put a condition in that the access is not from Sprout, but I'm just recording what has been said so far and what the general community feel is. Item three is about the short-term rental covenant. And the sense I got with seven days was where people settled. 30 days is no longer short-term rental. It's just rental. And then the, the fourth item was for fire. I did not have any item in there about wells. So if the, if the will of the body is to add that, we can add that. And then I wanted to acknowledge all the changes that have happened through this process. So the rest of the section, the lettered section is, I think the things that the developers has, has agreed to do, or at least verbally committed to doing. I hope that I haven't missed anything or misrepresented anything. But I think these are all concessions that have been made so far through the process. I wanted to record those and make sure that was acknowledged. Is there an item? I don't recall. I think that's it. And the rest is just boilerplate to the end. Yep, just to item D. So what we have in, so the, the items, I think we've, that the developers already changed the plans from the original representation was the two-story height. The parking is definitely much higher than the minimum parking and I, I, I know that, I think that's higher from the very first presentations. The discussion about stormwater drainage going down to Aliaska Highway route from Gunny Sack and the issue of not excessive lighting on the, on the site. So I'd be interested in any feedback from from direct neighbors. If there's anything they think is missing or should be added. And then we can discuss it as a board of whether we're happy with this. Well, whether we should write a letter of objection in the first place, I should say.
Uh, Mike, as the first, sir, go ahead.
Go ahead, Lee.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, as the person who made the motion, I think that this kind of hits on most of the things that we've, we've asked for and, and the developer has been resistant to looking into these things. So, but I think it looks good.
Any further comment from any of the neighbors or public? Or the board? So where are we at in the process? You've made this motion?
I've made a motion following LUC's recommendation that GPOS should write a letter of objection. My understanding from the process is just saying no doesn't gain us anything. That's what we effectively did for the, for the previous variance on the road, on the road upgrades. And the feedback I got from planning was, you know, thank you very much, but it's useless as a letter. We can't do anything with it. So the, the advice I have heard is that if you have specific objections or specific recommendations to conditions, they should be listed. So that's why the document looks the way it does. And I also have a question to, to the developer as well. If, if there's any misrepresentations in the sections of A to D, if you can tell me, because I want that to reflect what, what at least the verbal agreements have been.
I'm trying to think of misrepresentations.
All right. Hopefully that's a good, that's a description of what the verbal agreements have been through the meetings and I don't want to misrepresent anything.
Yeah, I'm listening to the opposition. I think everything that's been brought up via myself and a Laquita, we've tried to address. It's a lot of discussion with the water and the sprinklers and the fire rated walls. We're going to meet every code requirement, every title 21 requirement to make this project viable. I can't change public opinion of neighbors. I mean, I want to accommodate and I think we're trying to make other than people just saying they downright don't want the project. I can't win there. So I'm always open to listening. We've partaken in pretty much every meeting since we've tried to, since we've taken on the project and made all the successions that we could, you know, make this viable. So I feel like we're putting our best foot forward and, and good earnest built a good quality that I think a lot of people there would hopefully be proud of. And I, and I love what I do and I feel really good in our product and I think that we're going to build quality homes that'll fit within the culture of the community. So that's all I got. Whether you guys vote to approve or disapprove, I, I feel good that I was a part of the process and that's, that's why I stand. But I do appreciate you guys listening and at least taking it up to hear what we're trying to accomplish and build in the community. Because I love Gerwood. I believe in that area and I spend a lot of time there with my own family and I don't want to be disliked in the community, you know, so it's, it's tough in a small town and a small city in Anchorage where we're, we're out of and but again, whatever you guys decide, we respect and, and that's it. But yeah, that's what I got. I appreciate you guys.
Thanks. As, as Jerry said, the, the process is, the process when it goes behind, in front of planning and zoning is for conditional use is they're looking basically at what conditions, what, what conditions are needed to mitigate the negative impacts of the development. So that's what we're trying to identify throughout this process. And I think we, as a, as a group of, that you as the developers, the neighbors and the broader community, I think we've identified a number of issues. We've reached a consensus on some and we still have a small gap, or at least a gap between, I think, what the developers want, what the neighbors want on some other issues. So what we, what this document really does is outlines where we've reached consensus, where there's still, where we haven't reached consensus. And we're kind of throwing it to planning and zoning who actually make the decision about what the conditions are. So although this is titled letter of objection, it's, 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 it's an objection to specific things and a recommendation for conditions. So it's, it's not purely negative.
Understood.
And I would just reiterate what Mike said and say that I appreciate all the public comment you've allowed. I know it's not easy to sit through and you, this, this last set of meetings, I know you don't have to do, and I just appreciate you coming and coming before the community. It's important and I want to thank you for doing it.
No problem. Look, we want to, we want to do good things. There's going to be objection in, in a lot of things, but at the end of the day, we're, we don't want to do anything that's going to cause unrest with other neighbors or devalue or I own real estate. I wouldn't want anybody to build next to me that I didn't think was either going to improve or be like kind of what we're doing. So I get it. And I, I see some of the discrepancies of where we stand with the minimum nights and I don't want to be naive and commit to something that I can't commit to because I don't know what the project's going to be. But again, I do appreciate the opportunity.
And I'll make one last comment too, for the neighbors and everybody. If you want to comment before P and Z, you have to get a hold of them early and you know, write a letter or comment during public comment when they're up, I think it's August 3rd. Any further comments?
I have one other kind of question for Mike or any other homeowners who are on. I'm curious if number one would still be true if, if there were some decisions made on short-term rentals, like say, I mean, if they're, if the developer decided, okay, we aren't, we won't do short-term rentals, then is that density of nine? Is, is that doable? Or I'm, I'm just curious if that's directly related to short-term rentals or if it's related to the number of units only.
I, I would make a comment as a neighbor. To me, it's directly related to short-term rentals. I don't think nine units are too many if they don't have short-term rentals. Other neighbors would disagree with me, I know. I know, like Spencer said, they should be, build five like they're permitted without a conditional use permit. But for me as a neighbor, I don't mind nine units on the property. I just find it if there's people coming and going every night and having parties causing issues like we have up in your neighborhood.
Let's not mask and stay six feet apart. And wash their hands frequently and don't touch their faces.
Touching my face.
I think that's a good question, Aaron. Again, I'd be interested in hearing from, so I just listed these issues separately based on every, everything that had been minuted over across all the meetings. But perhaps as the, as the neighborhood representatives, Lee and Leah, you can comment on it.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I'm really, really excited about this election.
Well, I voted.
I think the, you know, the big issue from the beginning and I, and I think it's good for the developers to know this and I, and I, you know, I don't know how much they gleaned from the last permitting process, but you know, the, the number of units, the big concern primarily for the neighborhood since the beginning was traffic flow. Our experience with Sprout Road, it's a very narrow road. In the wintertime, it becomes about one and a half lanes, very frequent, very frequently used by pedestrians. So there's kind of bad aspects. There are no properties of this density of that size that connect directly to Sprout Road. So, you know, our big concern was originally when this area was zoned, the way it was zoned, intent was most likely that a high-density development like that, which is totally sensible to build there if it were naturally connecting with the Aliaska Highway. So Sprout Road is, you know, there's been a lot of different discussions about the fact that it's a collector street, but is it really a collector street is, and it's so far from the standards of a collector street that you know, you could say you can put these developments on a collector street because that's what it's judged, but by any standard, it's not designed to collector street standards. So that's a big issue that we have is traffic, number one, regardless of whether it's nine units or 12 units, it's still a lot of units and it's high density on that lot like nothing else. And then square footage size, you know, one of the largest units, there's a fourplex down the road that connects to directly to the Aliaska Highway. It's but it's maybe 6,000 square feet and it's the largest piece of property in, in the entire neighborhood. So just square footage size, I mean, they're looking at 19,000 square feet of, of buildable structure and then that gets to be an issue with the fire concerns. Because GFD just simply doesn't have the capacity to put out any sort of like, they could barely put out my house or Jerry's house. We, they'd be focused on containment most likely. And if my house were ever catch fire, it would be most likely a total loss. So now you're talking about a structure 15 times the size of my house and that just represents a very different hazard than what we're used to in the community that already has an issue with, with fire hazard as it is. It's also across the street from a, the only water tank in the whole neighborhood to refill fire trucks. So that's why we get very concerned regardless of whether it's short-term or long-term. If there were a weekend, you know, festival or whatever it might be, people are going to park in front of that fire tank on 4th of July when it's the hottest weekend and a fire starts and it's just one less resource we have just because of poor citizenship from, you know, people who aren't familiar with the rules and the culture and the safety mindset that we might have in Gerwood. So I think that was kind of all those different concerns about the size and density of that, of that piece of property.
I think hearing that, it makes sense to me to keep them as individual items rather than linking them. But yeah, thanks for the input.
After Lee stated that, I would agree. The most of the neighborhood would agree. The biggest problem is the road and the traffic. Any further discussion? Hearing Anna, we have had a resolution, a resolution and we've had a second. I will call for a vote.
Go call. Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Jerry Fox.
Yes.
Mike Edgington.
Yes.
James Glover.
Yes.
Did I get everybody? Oh, Aaron Boone, sorry.
Yes.
That passes 5-0.
And again, I'd like to just thank the developer for showing up at all our meetings. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda, we moved up item 15 to be item 11 point B or 11B. Eleven and a half. Request for GPOS resolution to support for Gerwood Health and Child Care CARES Act funding request. Crystal.
Hello, everybody again. And it's like Kyle sharing.
I gotta go find it. It'll be a bit.
Sure. Okay, so basically right when the current COVID crisis and CARES Act started getting discussed because it was even prior to it being passed that we were following this and we formed a committee of members of Gerwood Alliance and and from there we were identifying who we thought needed the most help in this regard. And I think that Mike clarified that this might not be the total request of Gerwood, but it's definitely the forefront and needs to be addressed. So we brought in the Gerwood Health Clinic who was happy to have our support and advocacy efforts. And then we also brought in Little Bears Playhouse for the childcare aspect. And over the course of several months have been working, we meet, meeting weekly and putting together a plan. And so basically it's to rebuild the Gerwood Clinic and also to build a childcare center. If you scroll down, the emphasis is going to be on first responders. So those who are parents, working parents that are first responders or healthcare providers would have a priority preference for services. And we believe that this falls within the CARES Act guidelines and Treasury guidelines. The Gerwood Clinic primary concerns, they don't have the necessary medical standards for hygiene and sanitation. They have a limited surge capacity. They lack independent emergency care capacity. They lack emergency operations, storage and lack behavioral health and substance abuse support during the emergency. So those are the kind of the key components. Childcare aspects. So many of you guys know that Little Bears was closed down from mid-March to June 1st. So those are the kind of the key components, childcare aspects. So many of you guys know that Little Bears was closed down from mid-March to June 1st. This left many first responder parents without any kind of childcare at all, myself included. My husband is a firefighter. And the nonprofit work went way up and no, no resources for help with kids because my husband was essential. So already constrained in a tight space with a waitlist for services and if this physical distancing can kind of make it impossible to financially sustain themselves. The current facility is becoming physically unsafe. I don't think that's really arguable at this point. We need to get our kids in a new and safe building as soon as possible. The demand, we already, I apologize for talking about that, a public comment. I spoke about it, public comment in Land Use, so that's why I spoke up at that point. Attempt to bond, Prop 10 failed after receiving almost 80% support within the Girdwood Valley Service Area. So there are no funds appropriated to deal with the Little Bears problem, building facility issue. And in addition, so Girdwood first responders and businesses cite lack of childcare availability as a major challenge for recruitment and retention. So those, this effort would help us to stay in compliance with COVID-19-related public health measures and we consider essential childcare, consider childcare as essential and it's definitely been emphasized at the assembly level. In regards to tourism and future recovery, if visitors don't feel like our community is safe, they won't return. And so we need to have the resources that they might need. So a proper health clinic for, that has water all the time would be kind of at the top of the list as something that would make you feel safe. And this would could, could help contribute to new jobs through construction. And next slide. This is the breakdown of the two, two projects combined, so just shy of 10 million. And the, what you're seeing on the left there is the rendering for the Girdwood Health Clinic. And you're seeing on the right is the Prop 10 rendering, and we do have a new rendering that was provided by Z Architects, which is scalable by adding additional classrooms. And these are the letters of support we have available for review. And they include everybody on Girdwood Board of Supervisors, many, almost every member on Girdwood Alliance. Many board members for Girdwood Health Clinic and Little Bears as well. In addition to Mandy Haas, general manager for Aliaska Resort, who has offered partnering with us for building and design work. They are obviously in the middle of building their spa. And so a lot of the resources that we might need are already in place and will be finishing up at this time that we might be able to roll forward on this project should the funds come through. And Dave Parrish took this picture days before we were going to be presenting to the mayor's office on this. And it just is a, many of you guys probably saw this with the, with the camper that got ran over and basically if we were to have a major event such as a tour bus accident, you know, the Girdwood Health Clinic is the only nearby facility to deal with that in addition to our first responders. So in considering, we know that the highway's been shut down for multiple reasons, not only natural disasters, but also accidents, we just need to have the resources locally to be able to keep our residents safe. And this is a more broad description. It's several pages long and you can, it's obviously available on the packet here. And it's also on the Girdwood Alliance website. This covers our, our Girdwood first responder boundaries. So we're, like Michelle was bringing up earlier, the service area is huge. It, it covers 25% of the municipal land boundary. And so we need to, again, have the resources to take care of this area here. This, the appendix is going over the various ways in which the health clinic doesn't feel like they are adequately prepared. So hence the urgency for addressing this matter. These are various designs that we have. This one is the, let's see, yep. We actually have four different designs. This is the one that is scalable from Z Architects. You can see on the right-hand side how that wing there, you could extend the hallway and add additional classrooms to make it scalable. So that, as of right now, this design is at the top of the list. As it's already been built in, in the valley. So we really know the price point and what we can get for the square footage, et cetera. The design, the playground design was provided by Palmeroy Lodging. And the parcel there is right on Chair 7. So if you are headed to the resort, the gravel road on the right-hand side that would take you to the mid, mid Chair 7 is the proposed site. And then this is our background. In conclusion. And that's it. Any questions I can answer? Hearing none, thank you very much.
We do have a raised hand from Christina Cop Henderson.
I think after two years, you'd know my name, Kyle. Come on. Thanks, everybody. Thank you. I'm, I'm missing a beat. Last time I attended a meeting, the clinic was going on an acre on the other side of the south town site, like on behind like the ball field. What was the impetus for now going up to the resort for the clinic? Especially since I see Schubert doing a whole bunch of construction across the street.
I'm sorry about that. It roboated on me there for a second. So the clinic plans to build on their same lot. They are, they have ownership through a reversionary deed of trust. So they have land to develop on and I think they feel secure and comfortable with that land. And so they are choosing to develop on that parcel. The land across from the ballpark has been discussed and, but also the uncertainty and cost of development is an issue for that. So I think that we had received some, some numbers from Robin several years ago now that were in the millions and and then the health clinic received a private bid that was for half a million. But that's still that, there was several unknowns for that. I do see Shelley shaking her hand, head in regards to development costs. So I'm happy to hear what she has to share for what she thinks it would take, or, or Robin's also to develop that parcel for communities.
Nothing. I just think the clinic had $500,000 quoted. That's all.
This is Christina. I'm remembering the G boss meeting in which the clinic was going to get an acre in exchange for like doing some paving, which was going to be somewhere between half a million and $650,000. That's what I thought Lou presented on. Am I wrong in that one, Mike? Do you remember that meeting?
Yeah, I do. So I, I will, I will further muddy the waters. My understanding, at least from attending some of these, some of these meetings, is that there are no hard and fast decisions on site. There is plenty of discussion and there's a prioritization on site, but there's no hard commitment to any site. That the, the area kitty corner from the ball field is still under consideration. And the area for either a joint facility or for the, or for the clinic, rebuilding in their current location is almost certainly for the clinic is almost certainly the fastest path because there's fewer permit issues to deal with, but it also limits size and capacity. And with, with Little Bears rebuilding on the current site is probably, we would miss an opportunity to expand the provision of childcare. So I think one of the concerns is that a lot of the childcare provision for families in Girdwood has been because one or both parents work in Anchorage, commute to Anchorage every day and therefore have, you know, an Anchorage-based childcare is a suitable solution. Going forward with fewer people physically going into offices, that may not be, that may not be the right way to pursue it in the future. So there's a much stronger, and I don't think many people are wanting, are going to want to commute to Anchorage, drop their child off, come back to Girdwood to work and then go back into Anchorage to pick the child up in the evening. So there's definitely a much higher demand for childcare. It was, there was always a higher demand for childcare that we could provide, but it's substantially higher now.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question when we were doing the, the bond language. I wanted to make sure we were in concert with what the spa's additional capacity was going to warrant for building something for X amount of students when actually the enrollment was Y. Or the need was Y as, as what Crystal provided in some of her information previously presented.
And obviously the situation is even larger than that now. Now there's a far more people working from home and that's likely to be a much more substantial model in the future. So as, you know, as a bedroom, part of our, part of Girdwood is a bedroom community for Anchorage. But that means something different now. It's not bedroom, it's bedroom and home office. And that has impacts on a number of other things. So, so I, my understanding, maybe Crystal can correct me if I'm actually misunderstanding this, is there's no commitment to specific sites in this discussion. It's about identifying the need and identifying the, the sort of at least a, a, a plan and a costing around that plan for something we can do kind of now or in the very short term. Now I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually say that other people comment why I said, but I'm really interested to hear what John Weddleton says because John's kind of in, probably one of the decision makers. He can probably speak more to, you know, what's attractive about this, about this project.
Yeah, and John, to that to set you up, I'm interested in what are the CARES Act requirements because almost like a tiger grant, you're going to have an extremely high overhead for administrative needs in order to meet very specific criteria. And if the clinic is still like, oh, we might go here, we might go there. I, I, I don't know if it's really a shovel-ready project or something along those lines, as I think I read in some of the, the comments from Suzanne LaFrance's meeting last week.
That a question to me?
Yes, John. Dig her away.
No, thanks. I, I think you're right. I, I thought we were more shovel-ready initially too, because I thought at one point we were going with what was essentially on the bond. We did talk about this quite a bit this morning. Well, I guess not the Little Bears, but the clinic. And if we can get, you know, a pretty good plan that is bid-ready, for example, we think that by the end of the year, that that might be enough to commit the funds because, because the use of CARES Act funds for the What? Am I there now?
Yep.
You got me? Okay, sorry about that. The use of CARES Act funds for this are pretty cleanly aligned with the goals. You know, with the clinic certainly health is one, but also the new mandates and separation and so on clearly make the current already crowded clinic not work. And childcare has been very high on a use for the funds to get people back to work. So the timing is really the trick. And I think that's something that we really do have to get on quickly. So hopefully we get something ready that could be 100% CARES Act ready by the end of the year and have it committed, not necessarily paid for. But if we had a contract with a design-build aspect that we think is enough to cover the requirements of the CARES Act. But if we can't quite get that, at least we could maybe use the funds to get the design and get us further ahead so that at least we'd have moved the ball much, much closer and then try something else next time, you know. Not every bond will fail. But, but there are challenges, Christine.
So I'll ask a question. Is it true, Crystal, that the property over by Chair 7 for Little Bears would be cheaper? The thought is be cheaper to build because there's more infrastructure there. You don't have to pave the road. You don't have to put in the water sewer.
Yeah. So to go back on whether these lots have been, you know, permanently decided upon, I would say that we've got commitment to move forward on that from Aliaska in a way that makes us feel comfortable. The infrastructure as far as water, sewer and electricity are all right there. Like the pump, the wellhouse, pump house is right there. So we're talking about very low development costs to bring in the infrastructure, which is, I think, in contrast to the 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 site by the ball field. And if we, if we have, if I have, I mean, I would appreciate any and all input, especially from, from Shelley and Robin as to development costs for that, because if we had more information on that, we might be looking at that more seriously, but we do have commitment from, you know, from a party and we're prepared to move forward on that. But if, if things came forward that they were willing, you know, could, could help in giving us some good solid data on what it would, it would take to develop it and bring the utilities to where we would need, it would be, you know, considered to a higher level, I would say.
Jerry, this is Robin.
Hey, Robin. Speak up.
We don't really have very good numbers because we just haven't done enough research. And I'll have to see what, you know, how fast we could do that. But I do want to make sure that Crystal and her group knows that the property that they're talking about with Aliaska is a leased lot from HLB. And that would require it to go to our HLB commission. It would be a modification of their lease. So I'm going to encourage you to make a request that we can get that on the August HOBAC meeting because it'll also need to go to the Assembly for a modification of a lease like that. So if we're going to pursue that with Aliaska's concurrents, I really am going to encourage you to move quickly in the next 10 days and, and get a request so that we can get you on the agenda. And then let Shelley and I look at the south town site lot again and see if we can get better numbers and, and how fast we can do that.
Thanks, Robin.
Thank you regarding the numbers. In, in regards to the lease, Aliaska feels like it falls within their lease. So that was what I was told. And if, but if we do need to get that onto the HLB agenda, then I'm happy to do a presentation there.
Okay, let us, let us check with the attorneys, with Palmeroy's attorney and also ours to confirm that. It may still take a lease modification, but it may not take Assembly approval. Don't know. I'm just going to have to look at it and see.
Sure. I know that when it was reviewed, the comment was that childcare is, is a associated use with skiing and skiing facilities. And Mandy's comment was, we're probably one of the only ski resorts in the nation that don't have a childcare facility on site.
Okay.
Okay, so Robin, you'll look into the attorneys and figure out whether they need to change the lease and put it before the Assembly or not. Any other questions?
Well, I guess my question is, I think I know the answer, but I'll ask the question anyway. So specifically, Crystal, what I think you're looking for is a, is a resolution of support in principle without all of the details being filled in because there, we don't have all the details at the moment and it's a moving target. So it's the, it's the principle of seeking CARES Act funding for infrastructure improvements for both healthcare facility and a childcare facility.
Yes, that is correct. And I, and I would say, you know, I listened to the entire call Friday with the Assembly amongst many other people. And this project has far more detail than many of the things that are being suggested. So even though some complete details are not ironed out, we know roughly what we're going to need in order to build for the capacity to meet Girdwood's needs. So that's why we would request that motion.
And I'll ask one more question or maybe more than one. But so just to be clear, the general plan right now though is to have a separate healthcare clinic on the same site. the general plan right now, though, is to have a separate healthcare clinic on the same site rebuilt and a childcare facility over near Chair Seven. That's kind of the general direction you're moving.
Yes, that's correct.
But I was, I'm just going to add that there are, there are other reasons why that may not be where it ends.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, there are definitely can broad, I mean, I think for each individual group, for each individual facility, that's their top priority. I think as a community, there's arguments for that the overall benefit is greater for other solutions. But that's not really what we're debating at the moment. And that's what, what the resolution is for. The resolution is to, is basically to say that, you know, these are needed facilities and we think this is a, a good use of the municipal municipalities' CARES Act funding.
And when you say there may be different community concerns or something, I don't know what you're
Okay, so, so in terms of, so very specifically, one of the, there would be, there are advantages from a community point of view and from the economic development point of view to have, to have some of the South Townsite developed. It opens up, it potentially opens up more commercial land. So we have a, we have a shortage of, severe shortage in this community of commercial land and we can do things like rezoning, we can do other things. But making, making land we already have and is already zoned for that and already has most of the infrastructure more attractive is beneficial. We don't have any office space in the community, for example. There's all sorts of things that are missing here, and I think there's need for in the, in the medium term. So thinking of it from a sort of longer-term planning perspective, there are community advantages in, in having development, for example, in the South Townsite. And I think probably HLB would agree with me on that, or maybe not. But there are, there are advantages in that potentially, you know, there are, there are other things that might make more land available for other uses as well. So just in from the bigger picture to sort of take what we have now, which is a very restricted amount of, of land and opportunity. And expanding that is generally beneficial as long as it's done sensibly. So there are many ways that could happen. This is one of them. So if you take a much bigger, broader perspective, there might be advantages with other solutions. However, we do not have adequate childcare. We don't have a good location now. And we, sorry, we don't have a, a facility for childcare which is adequate now, and it definitely isn't adequate for expansion. So any solution which gives us a better infrastructure, I think is one I would support. There are just a variety of options and I think we're not quite at the point where we've identified the only option. There's still some flexibility here. But the, the resolution is about the principle, not about the details yet.
It sounds all that I get, the sooner this proceeds, the better.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion for a resolution to support for the Girdwood Health and Childcare CARES Act funding.
I move that, I don't have language available unfortunately, but I move that we write a resolution to support for the CARES Act funding for the healthcare and childcare facility in Girdwood.
A second.
Further discussion? Any other questions? Hearing none, call for a vote.
Okay, roll call. Jerry Fox.
Yes.
James Glover.
Yes.
Mike Edgington.
Yes.
Rihanna Sullivan.
Yes.
Five zero passes.
Oh, you forgot me again, Kyle.
Sorry, Erin. Erin Boone.
Yes.
Five zero.
Okay. So that was item eleven and a half. We're going to go on to new business, item twelve. Agenda item LUC 200705, request for GUS action regarding Representative Jennifer Johnson's comments in the Alaska Journal of Commerce regarding early distribution of PFD in rural communities. See Alaska Journal of Commerce article of four, seven, 2020. Julie presenting. Julie, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Julie Raymond Jacobian, Girdwood resident. I have before you, I don't know if Kyle can, can pull it up there, but a resolution that discusses some comments that Representative Jennifer Johnson made back in April. That summary on the agenda is, is pretty accurate. She made comments about rural communities, Alaska Native communities not being able to handle multiple streams of funding coming into their communities at one time. Saying that social services would be overwhelmed. It is in the article that's, that's linked there on the agenda. I've asked Representative Johnson to attend GBOS meetings to speak to these comments multiple times. I know that GBOS has also extended invitations. Jerry mentioned he spoke with her today or sometime recently, but I have not. She indicated that she did not want to participate in a public lashing. Which I think it's very unfortunate that a elected public official would think that being accountable for comments they made in public and on the record, and which they do not deny making, would be a public lashing. So this resolution was not my first step. I, I did invite her multiple times. I sent this resolution to GBOS back in May. And again, she has not denied that she made these comments. And as Mr. Weddleton alluded to earlier in the meeting today, we're living through some important times in our country right now. And I really truly believe this is a moment of change. And my hope is that this body will be part of that change as opposed to standing by and letting comments like this go unremarked and unchallenged. And I hope that you'll draw a line here as opposed to blurring the line out of some desire to preserve your own comfort. The comments that Representative Johnson made were deeply disturbing to me. And I know to many other Alaskans, many people have called for her to step down. And she's been widely criticized. This resolution is not asking her to step down. It's saying that we don't agree with her uninformed and racist comments. And that they don't represent our community or our values. And just to briefly address some of what Jerry said at the opening of this meeting in terms of appropriateness of this resolution, it, I believe it's absolutely appropriate holding our elected public officials accountable for their words and actions. That's, that's something that we do as a public. And she's a public figure who said these things publicly. She represents us, our community here. This is not a representative of some other district. She's our representative. And so I think it's very appropriate. And I also don't think it should matter if it's close to an election or not. You're, you're not endorsing a candidate you know, that's running for office. You're speaking to something that a current elected official said and has done. And so, you know, in terms of language, censuring her, it's censuring, not censoring. There is a big difference there. You know, change the wording if, if you want. You guys do that all the time. The point of this is that I think we need to acknowledge what she said. I think we need to name it. And I think we have to condemn it. And we need to show support for the Alaska Native community, both here in Girdwood. We do have Alaska Native residents in Girdwood as well as for the broader Alaska Native community throughout our state. So that is why I have prepared this resolution for consideration.
Mike, you want to comment?
Yeah, I do have a question for you, Julie. So I think Representative Johnson and, and several other people have have said she's, she's apologized for those comments. Do you feel she's apologized? And if you don't feel she's apologized, how do you think her, her attempt at apology falls short?
She has apologized on her Facebook page. That's the apology I've seen. I thought it was very brief. It didn't really address the issues or the criticisms that she received after it. I would like to hear it from her herself and be able to ask her more detail about what's behind the comments that she made, what she's learned since making those comments, what proactive actions she's taken to learning about how those comments were hurtful to the Alaska Native community and others, and, and what she's doing to address that. So she said the words, "I apologize," but I do not feel they're adequate.
And I can make a comment. You know, I talked to Jennifer Johnson and she apologized to me when I told her that I thought it was inappropriate. She told me that she took ownership of it. She said she did say it. She was going to learn from it. And she would try to reach out to Julie and speak with her. And, you know, want to talk to her and apologize to her. About her being proactive, I don't know that there's any hope of that, but that's, that's another issue.
Well, I can just tell you that she does have my phone number and she does have my email. And she reached out to me once briefly a couple of weeks ago, but we, we have not. She has not approached me on the phone for a conversation. I also wanted to just briefly touch on the issue of scope, GBOS's scope and whether or not this is appropriate in that context. I, I don't believe this is outside of your scope at all. Again, she represents us. We have Alaska Native people in our community, our neighbors, our friends, family members, colleagues. GBOS has most definitely taken up issues that would at least be considered equally outside the scope if you're going to consider this outside your scope. Like again, the most recent one that keeps coming to my mind is that Salmon Hattery's resolution. So, you know, I, I really think this is completely within your scope, though I did earlier in the meeting request that you take up your procedures dealing with quote, "out of area" requests, because I think they're unclear. But I do feel like this falls well within your scope.
One of the problems I have with it is just, you know, I have a problem with Representative Diesel and some of the things she's done. I mean, Don Young has said some horrible, horrible things. And he's another one of our representatives. So if we're going to take this up every time one of our representatives says something that isn't appropriate, that we don't find appropriate, we're going to be taking a lot of these. But anyways, I'll stop there. What other comments from the board?
I was just going to say there is a solution to the, to the Don Young being a representative. He says terrible things. We have that solution in November.
Yeah, that's correct. Anybody else on the board have a comment?
I, I'm just going to make one more, one more comment. I think, I, I, I agree with Julie. I think this is, this is within the remit of, you know, a role as community council. I don't think this falls outside the considerations. That's a different question as to whether I agree with this particular, this particular wording. I think as a concept, we should be able to discuss this. And I accept there is potentially a slippery slope, but I'm trying to separate, you know, how, where this could turn into with what this actually is. And I think this topic is, is acceptable.
Any comments from the public? Christina, do you have a comment?
I sure do. Thanks, Jerry. I appreciate being called upon again. This came to my attention when I saw it in ADN and I really appreciate Julie bringing it to our community. I know that I've brought forth something related to our community before through land use, and that was the response to the US Navy exercises in the Gulf of Alaska. So I do think that this qualifies because it does have a, a direct reflection on our community and our values, just as that ancillary and indirect resolution of support that I obtained three years ago from this body does. From Julie's point of view, I agree with her. I think that the representative's comments were poor. And I think that the language is appropriate in the resolution. And I support it as a community member going forward. And I appreciate Mike's conversation point about, you know, making sure that the language is right so that we don't have a slippery slope. But when something's wrong, you got to call them out on it, just like we did in the negotiations for the Powder Run development and the back and forth there. We had that discussion with that developer and came to a consensus on some of the design components that they had. I think the same should be for someone that we elect to represent our community.
Other comments?
Hi, can I make a comment? I'm not sure if I'm needed.
Yes, you are.
Oh, okay. This is, thank you. This is Brendan Raymond Jacobian. And I, I guess I would just, just have a brief comment. Maybe I would expand on it at a, a second meeting when you guys are taking action. But I would just, just very quickly echo what Christina and Julie said and just voice my support for the, for the resolution as well. I think it's important that we, that we make a statement of community values here and in this particular direction. And I'll, I'll just keep it brief and leave it at that for now. But thank you.
Any other further comments?
Jerry, do you want to read in the record? There's one comment on chat.
Okay. Let me see if I I'd like to see GBS support censure here. That's from Kaylee. I think that's the one you're talking about, Kyle.
Correct.
Yeah, now, you know, I feel bad because, you know, I don't support what she said. I think what she said was awful. I'll just continue to state that. But I do not believe it's appropriate for our board. We're not taking this up tonight, so this will be on land use next month and then be in front of our board the following month, as long as I can get it off.
I had, I had one very quick comment. It, it's about process and I think something Judy said, Judy said earlier. I think the, I think one of the issues here is the, the out-of-area procedure and guidelines we came up with was really for people who weren't part of this community bringing up items to GBOS on to land use. So we had a number of, a number of cases where people had no connection to Girdwood, but were doing very general things asked us to pass resolutions. So one of the things we put in there is it really has to be generated by someone within the community for us to consider. And I think in the process, we probably wrote those rules with that use case in mind, rather than the case that you're presenting here of something which is, you know, outside of the narrowest sense of, of our responsibilities, but being generated within the community and of interest to the community. So, but we'll, as I said, I'm, I'm very interested in, in taking more detailed comments from you and we'll work through that and try and improve our procedures.
Yeah, I think that came out of the group that came that were opposed to Citizens United, wanted to change that election political fundraising and all that. But there was nobody in the community that was promoting it. It was just out-of-area people. I think it was either even out of state.
Jerry, you got two hands raised. One's Christina again, and then Lee Ellis.
Okay, Lee, you're first.
Hi, Jerry. Thanks. So I think everybody pretty much agrees that this comment was inappropriate. And, you know, we talked a little bit, LUC, just about, you know, you look at the overall career of, of the work somebody's done. And then you look at a comment like this. And I think that combined with censure from us doesn't necessarily mean anything. So I would say that if I, you know, were to throw my two cents in, is there, could we change it to be condemning the statement? I think that would be fair. I think censuring a politician, you know, when censure doesn't mean anything, it's, it's a, you know, maybe not have the kind of effort that we'd like to see with this, with this kind of motion. So that would probably just be my one thing is, could we consider condemning the statement? And that way, you know, it's clear that Girdwood doesn't hold this as, as part of its value system. And the other thing I would say is, is to consider that you know, there are issues going on in Bush Alaska, and it's not just the Native community. There's a lot of people that live out there. And I think they do need to be addressed. And I think that's the really important work that has to happen. So I would love for the statement to, to address that. I think, I think the representative was maybe trying to address it in a not very constructive or good, well-developed way. But I think that's something that we probably do think is important is how to create more, you know, just and equitable society out, out in the rural parts of the state as well. But yeah, that'd be my two cents. Thanks.
Thanks, Lee. Christina, you wanted to pick another comment? Thanks, Lee. Christina, you wanted to pick another comment?
Maybe not. Maybe the hands from the previous one.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
If I could just say one more thing, and that's first of all, just to thank you all for having this discussion tonight, and I hope that we can have another productive discussion next month at Land Use Committee. You know, in terms of Representative Johnston's career and past actions, which also came up at Land Use last month. You know, what are people's past good actions by them? I guess it's a question that everyone has to answer individually, but you know, I firmly believe, I'm not asking for her to step down. I'm not asking for this body to recommend that, but I firmly believe that we can find representatives who both do good things for this community and do not say ignorant and hurtful things. And I welcome language changes to this resolution. I know it's not up to me, but I, as the presenter, I do welcome them. And I think what's really important here is, again, acknowledging what she said and naming it and condemning it. Condemning is a good word to use and making sure that we express support for our Alaska Native community members here in Girdwood and more broadly across the state.
Okay, thanks, Julie. Anybody else? I don't see anybody on the chat. Okay, I think we're going to move on. Again, that will come up in land use and again at the following meeting.
Order of procedures, we need to make a motion. You have 10 minutes until 10 to extend the meeting.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:30.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
unanimous consent. Okay. Item 13, Agenda LUC 2007-6, Initial Presentation Request for GBOS Action Regarding Variance Request for Stream Setback for Addition to Existing Home at 260 Alta Drive. P&amp;Z Hearing is Scheduled for August 13th, 2020, Prior to the Next GBOS Regular Meeting. View Info Online at, and then there's a web address. Shannon or Jonathan will be presenting.
Hi, this is Shannon. Thanks for extending the meeting for me and for everybody else after me. So yeah, so I gave a very brief presentation at Land Use. We have applied for a stream setback variance for an addition on our home located at 260 Alta Drive. Do you want me to just kind of go through this whole variance or do you want me to do, since it's late brief, or how deep do you want me to go here?
You can go through it, but try to be as brief as possible.
I will be. I'm from the East Coast. I can be very quick. Okay, so we have an odd-shaped lot that has variety of different features. We have, if you're facing our house from Alta on the right, we have a creek. It doesn't have a name. It flows heavy at runoff in the spring. It dries up in the summer many times. There's a park space to the right of that creek behind our current house, way in the back there where it looks like there's a lot of usable land is a Class C wetland. We have pretty serious drainage anytime it rains in the winter or anytime the snow melts, once there's rain, and Kyle has seen it all. He takes very good care of our culvert, but without that care, we would be probably flooding underneath our house. Our house was built in 1973, prior to all of the current zonings. It's actually in the setback. It's in the stream setback currently. It's also in the right-of-way setback in the front. Taking away our home, we looked at all the different options, taking away our home, we would lose our, all the setbacks. We're, we're very close to our neighbor, so we don't really have that much usable space. If we were to build in the Class C wetland, it might alter the drainage for everybody up on chateau. So we chose not to do that option. So in the end, it needed the most sense to build an addition behind it. The addition will, so the stream setback is at least 70, at least 85 feet from the edge of the stream. If there's fish in it, it's 100 feet. We don't have fish in this stream. It's uphill from Glacier Creek. There's nowhere for them to get here. Currently, we've had the stream plotted by Kyle at the municipality last spring. It's three to four feet. So let's say it was four feet wide if we use that measurement. Our house is currently 11.1 feet from the stream at its closest point. And if we, in our current plan here to build the addition, the closest point for the house would be 15 feet. So it would actually be further away from our current house from the stream. And then if we were to include a deck, that would be at the most nine and a half feet from the stream. And so that's why we are requesting a variance for that. And we have, as I mentioned at Land Use, we have already spoken to all of the neighbors and so far we've had nothing but support. I can't say that we've gotten all the neighbors because some of them haven't been home. Our closest neighbor by proximity, which is the Vlazaviches, are supportive. We had Jeremy plot, put stakes in so that they could see where exactly it would be in reference to their home. And then we already have the municipality sign for variance hung on our house and people have been sending in letters of support. Our other closest neighbor, if you're facing our house to the right, is George Murphy. He is also supportive. There is that park space in between us. And then we have the park space across the street from us and then it's Heritage Land Bank. We have a red tail across the street to the right, if you're facing the road, and then the Wallace's across there. So, and then we spoke with the closest neighbors to the back that butt up to our backfield there, Mike Welch and the Harrisons. Or John, John owns the house. Is that adequate information or do you have questions?
That's adequate information. Thank you very much, Shannon. And are there any questions by the board?
I do have a question. I think, I think you said this, but I may, I didn't completely catch it. So although this would be building in the stream setback, are you saying there's a, there's a net improvement by effectively building further away than the existing structure?
So, well, the existing structure, if you've seen our house, is not a pretty sight. So we'll be changing the outer, closest to the road, the exterior there. So that would be an improvement there. I'm not exactly sure what you're asking, but
Sorry.
Where we chose, we are not affecting everybody else upstream in the wetland.
Specifically with regards to the stream. So are you, are you affect, are you moving any structures away from the stream, although you're rebuilding within the setback?
Yeah, we can't move our current house because then we lose all of our setbacks.
Right. But is there a shed that's moving?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. So we have a shed that we're going to move back. It's one that we built.
Okay. So by recollection.
Yeah, there's one little dry space that we're going to put that on.
My recollection, when we went through the new stream setback code is that if something kind of already exists within the, within the setback and you propose a change and it results in basically nothing worse or a net improvement ideally, it can, even though it's still within the setback, that might be an acceptable use.
Okay.
So it sounds like you're in that space of where you're, where you're making things better, although it's not as perfect as it would be if you.
Right. I mean, our lot isn't actually even wide enough at that point to fall in the stream setback restrictions. So we're kind of, I think what the variances were meant for in that, if you look at any area of our lot, there's a, there's something that we would have had to ask for a variance about.
Understood. That's true. So much of Girdwood.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Any other questions? Again, this is new business. So we'll come up for land use next month and then before us, also next month for resolution.
Right. So just as a reminder, we have, we're already signed on for the August 13th meeting with the Muni because we had to sign up in June to get on the August meeting. If we didn't get on the August meeting, we would have had to wait for months after that because they have that big three-month span where you sign up and wait to get on their agenda.
And tell me the timing of the.
It's May 13th. So I think that that happens before your next meeting.
August 13th.
I'm sorry, August. What month is it? Right. Who knows? Not May.
So we could either vote on this resources for tonight, or we could have a special meeting during one of our budget, after one of our budgets, we have on the 28th.
And Connor is also here, by the way, and he is designing our addition from Zierkantex.
Jerry, just for a point of order here, you know, typically we'll have this presentation before we get the staff packet, but in this case we didn't. And so the, the meeting with the commission is set before your next regular GBOS meeting. We've had a precedent on like this, a case like this before, where a group had a commission meeting before the next regular GBOS meeting. And so GBOS passed a motion that if LUC supported the measure or the request, then GBOS would write the letter of resolution for the project. And so unfortunately tonight, this is still in new business and it's already been opened in new business. So it's a new business item. But at the following meetings you have ahead of you, you could move this in the old business and either make that motion they just described, or set a special meeting date so that you can approve this and write the resolution for Shannon's request.
So I would, I think I would recommend that we just do it tonight rather than have a special meeting, that we do something where I would entertain a motion by somebody to write or to suggest a resolution of support for this variance with the understanding that it will be approved by Land Use. Does that kind of make sense?
I think what, I think what Kyle's saying is we have to, as a point of process, we have to at the minimum vote to act on this tonight first. And then if we choose to act on it tonight, then we can make the move, make the move to write a resolution. But we're currently sitting, we're currently sitting in new business and we didn't.
Motion to, what are we going to move this to new business?
Well, you have to say, treat this as old business.
Here's the problem, you're in.
It's getting a little late.
You're in new business right now and in order to do an action, you have to be in old business. So you could wait and address it at your quarterly meeting next Monday as a side, as a separate business item and make that motion. But right now you're in new business. So you would have to close this agenda item and then change your agenda to move it.
Yeah, I think I better, just for expediency and given the time, I think we should do this next, next week.
Yes.
The quarterly meeting.
I would agree.
All right, we'll move it to old business item for next meeting.
Come to that meeting to present again, or is it adequate that you can vote on it at that point?
It's good that you, that you're there.
Okay. Is there a way to get closer on the agenda? Our problem is our small house, so I've kept my son up till 10.
This will be much earlier. The meeting is, the meeting is between four and five.
Okay. Oh, four and five on Monday. Okay.
So we would be addressing it either probably immediately after that meeting.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, thank you and I'll ask Margaret for all the times and all that stuff.
Yeah, and we don't want to keep Dimitri up, so anyways.
Everybody's going to pay for it tomorrow. The whole community. All right. Well, thank you for, for.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay. Small house woes. Next year it won't be that way. So thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Next on the agenda. I think we're up to 14. Girdwood Bear Aware Funding Request for 1,000 to 3,000 Assisted Pay for Work Training and Education by Wind River Bear Institute in 2021. Alanya. I didn't say that properly, probably.
Elena.
Elena, thank you. It's getting late.
Elena, I can do it too.
I know Elena was here about two minutes ago.
He's here and I'm clicking on her unmute button and it won't unmute.
I just got a text message saying Zoom has just crashed on her. Could we perhaps go to item 16 and then come back to 15?
Okay, we'll go to item 16 and see if.
Oh, she's back.
Yeah, I'm back. I'm back. I don't, it won't start the video though. I tried.
All right.
That's all right.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I think that's what made it crash, but it did. I was like, unmute, unmute, I'm here, I'm here. So. Well, yeah, so sorry you won't get to see me, but I am here. I could present quickly too, I think. Well, everything is captured in this summary, so I'm not going to read it for you. But I also have a baby crying. Mike, can you cover this for me?
I'm not sure. It's quite, it's probably easier if I don't because I definitely can't be involved in any of it or any other things.
Bump me to the very end because I now have a crying baby that I must go take care of.
Okay, well, how about, how about Kyle? Can you cover this, Kyle?
I guess, I haven't been directly involved with it, but basically they're looking, they're looking for a match grant and requesting between 1,000 to 3,000 that could go towards this Wind River Bear Institute, which would provide two weeks of groundwork in Girdwood. And basically it would complete a bear hazard, better hazard assessment and training education for Girdwood Bear Aware and the local department of fishing game and the partners. So it would, it would be a great thing for the Bear Aware Group, which is grassroots, fully volunteer-based. And they're trying to do their best to help deal and mitigate with the bear issues that we're having here in town, mostly directly related to trash.
And, you know, I have a comment about all the, there's been a lot of work done by the Bear Aware Group and Mike and everybody, you know. There's been a lot of work and I appreciate all the work they've done. The, the top of the document states Toluamau needed 10,500. We're, they're only looking for 1,000 to 3,000. Where's the other money coming from? Does anybody know?
Elena has all the information on this. I've only been tangentially involved, but my understanding is the, the manufacturer of the, of the bear cart, which isn't bear-resistant cart, which isn't bear-resistant, has made a fairly substantial donation. And I believe the other, other parties have also made donations. But Elena has all the details there.
Okay. And again, this comes up, again, this is just new business, so we could ask more questions next month if we need to.
Yes.
I did, I did speak with Elena earlier. I've absolutely been in her case dealing with baby before. She did mention that the Wind River contract, you know, is 10,500 and there's 10,000 in public safety at GBOS. If she doesn't need all that, that's great, but I would say bears are becoming a public safety issue with the way that they've been entering houses lately. So I would consider that a public safety issue myself. And then on a side note, my husband's old hotshot crew just had when the Wind River Bear dogs working with them to keep their fire camp safe. So it's obvious, it's seems like a really cool program.
Yeah, we would suggest that the money comes out of that miscellaneous account for public safety.
Makes sense.
But we're looking for 1,000 to 3,000.
Correct. Yeah, no, we can't use the old 10,000. We have that in coverage for other things too.
Yeah. And I would assume that next month we would have a better idea of the number.
Yeah, we'll work with Alana to have that done.
Further questions, comments? Hearing none. We're going to go on to the next topic. Update on GBOS Nonprofit Recreational Grant Applications.
Margaret will talk to that.
I think if I scroll down just a little bit, there's just a one page. I just wanted to let you know that our grant application cycle did close and we had the usual suspects looking for pretty, maybe a little bit.
There you go.
There we go. So what we have is little bears looking for 10,000, Challenge Alaska looking for 10,000. Glacier Valley Transit at 6,000, Girdwood Art Institute at 5820, and the Girdwood Community Club at 8,000. Giving a total request of funding of 39,820. And, you know, this is relative to your upcoming budget discussion as well. So you have 35,000 currently budgeted, plus the Four Valleys hard funding of 25,000. So just keeping you up to speed on what the requests look like.
And we usually vote on that in September, correct?
We'll vote on it with the, yes, correct, in September.
Yep. Got a new hat on, Kyle. Anything else? We have the written reports that are in part of the packet. Anybody has any questions about the written reports? We have pending items. We have nothing else. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate all the volunteers.
Thank you.
Thanks, Earl.
Thanks, Kyle. Thanks, Margaret.